Start with opening prayer and pledge of allegiance. Pledge of prayer, but we talk in faith and belief. Heavenly Father, we just come this morning grateful for this place we live as we all strive to make it a better place, just pray that we would look to you for our guidance, we would have clear minds here this morning as we discuss matters, and have hearts open to listen to points of view, and all be mindful of each other's beliefs, and just pray that we would look to you this morning, we thank you for this country, we pray for our nation in this time of trouble that we are having, just pray that all truth will be known, we pray this in the name of our Lord and Savior Jesus Christ, amen.
Amen. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, approval of the agenda.
Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, a couple of changes to the agenda. Number one, the special meeting will not be needed. Item B under action items is moved to January, and item A under action items will be moved to F.
It's covered.
Is already covered under F, correction to the ambulance fund, so there's no need for the special meeting.
So approval for Borderlands win we can do in January?
That's correct. We're going to continue the ordinance in January.
And the other one we're going to, is on the agenda today?
It's on the agenda under item F.
All right, so we can cancel that. Next one. All right. I guess I have a question. I remember last meeting voting, doing the same thing that we're going to do today on the lodger tax, why are we doing this again?
We actually didn't vote the last meeting.
Last meeting was just a discussion.
It was just a discussion and we...
Oh, oh, no, 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 he's right. We did a direction to publish last time, and it's on, and it is on there again because we did not get it published.
Okay.
That's why it's on there.
That makes sense.
So we have so much time to publish it, or?
Yeah.
You could still publish it.
Yeah, that's what I was going to say.
You could probably remove the item if you'd like, if it's already on there, or let people talk about it. Either way, since you're already destroyed, you can...
Imagine if we were wanting to...
Well, I mean, it's fine, it's a, it's, it's fine to talk about it, but there's not, there's not a vote on it because it was not published.
We already voted on it, I mean...
We voted to publish, but that's all.
You want to revote?
You should always revote.
Okay, we'll leave it on there for now. That's it, I guess. Anybody seen it? Do I have them pushing to approve again?
I don't know.
In a second.
Motion in second to approve the agenda as it is, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Approval of minutes from November 14 meeting.
If the Commissioner has nothing, I don't have anything. Mr. Chairman, I'll make the motion that we approve the minutes.
I second it.
Motion in second to approve the minutes from November 14 meeting, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. All right, we come to the public comment period. There's people here I'm sure want to talk about this lodger tax. When we get to that part of the agenda, we'll probably allow some of you to say a little bit, but if you'd like to say what you have now, this is the portion where Republicans can speak about anything, any subject they'd like, try to take about two minutes, state your name for the record. Mr.?
My name is Wayne Price. I'm a relatively newcomer here, been here about nine years as a property owner, and since that time I've racked up about fifteen, twenty thousand dollars in property taxes that I haven't lived on, but I'm building a house. I moved here for a specific reason, and that is because of liberty and freedom that's still exercised in this county, and that type of freedom is disappearing all over this country. And so I'm here to stand in opposition to any lodger's tax and tax and spend type resolution. It's harsh for me to say this, but our new admitted socialist governor, and she is a socialist, passed SB 106, which now disallows exemption G, which opens the door to collect taxes from anything that meets the definition of a lodger. That includes all lodgers of any kind, grandma to outfitters. If grandma has to pay part of her social security tax to the family, then she's a lodger by definition under state law. Outfitters, when outfitters take people out and they lodge them up in a tent, they're going to have to pay this tax. You can't pick and choose, otherwise you'll meet in violation of state law. It's ironic timing that Katton County now wants to impose a regressive tax that has happened to Katton County's one-of-a-kind conservative constitutional values. Make no mistake, this is all about increasing taxes for self-serving, unelected bureaucratic purpose and control. I beg the Commission to reject this. This is not, it's constitutional, but it's not something Katton County, in my opinion, should be doing. You can't pick and choose winners, you can't impose, every tax has an action and reaction, and this type of tax, there's no question about it, all you got to do is get on the Internet and find out how regressive this tax is, and so I, I say you should reject this, and let this country's, let this county still be a free county. Thank you very much.
I'm Carly Schmider from Glenwood, Mexico, here at the Las Amas Lodge. I've spoken about this before, looked up his tax, part of the tax would be used on administering the tax. So if you took a hundred dollars, let's just say a hundred dollars, from my bank account to, for this lodger's tax, part of that's going to be used by the county to collect the tax, then put the tax in the bank, then have a little committee meeting to decide what to do with the tax. All that takes money out, and by the end of the day, my hundred dollars that you've just taken out of my coffers, basically, I know you, I've heard the argument, you don't pay it, your customers do. But basically, I do. It does still come out, I have to face the customer and explain to them why their bill isn't eighty dollars, it's a hundred dollars because of all the taxes and fees that come out. So don't tell me I don't pay it. The community pays it because that person has that much less money to spend doing other things, buying food, buying gifts, buying whatever. So it does still come out of the community. Then, so they've used it for the administrative costs, so that hundred dollars is now, say, ninety to eighty dollars. And then some people meet, discuss what to do with the tax, and then they had to go back to the county commission, I'm assuming, and come up with a plan. So all of that gets eaten out, little bits at a time, little bitty bites continually. So that hundred dollars that maybe I could have spent advertising my business is now down to about seventy dollars or sixty-five dollars. And so then, and then where does that money get spent? It could be spent up in Comato, it could be spent up in Daddle, it isn't being spent to actually help my business and my community. I realize we're one big county, but we are one big county, so it would behoove the people of Glenwood to keep their tax dollars within Glenwood. So that's only part of it. I also read that in these laws that it can be used, well, you, then you'd have to enforce it, so there's an expense to that. So whatever you're planning on doing, which I still don't have any idea what kind of size the tax is going to be, how you're going to enforce it, what the penalty is going to be if we don't pay it, none of that's been very transparent. And so this is getting a little ridiculous, because here I am arguing about a tax, I don't even have any clue what you guys are planning. Since you're publishing it, I'm assuming you already know what you're going to do with it. And frankly, I should be, have been on the agenda this month. I've asked twice, this is two months in a row, that I have not been put on the agenda where we can do some giving tape. So I don't know why, I called plenty of time to talk to you, you were left, you left early, and I was told to call back in the morning on Monday. You got in late, and then you published it without a call to me, ever. So you county commissioners ought to know, I've tried two months now trying to get on the agenda to discuss this, where I can do more than just stand here and appeal my case and nobody answer the question. So that is one. Now, I talked about how you're going to enforce it, what businesses are going to be included. As this gentleman just said, is it going to be RV parks, is it going to be outfitters, is it going to be everybody, is it going to be Airbnb's? None of that's been transparent at all. And here you're talking about publishing this, I guess eventually, but we've had no input at all into what you're planning to do. So that's why we're a little bit upset. I don't know what your bill says or what your ordinance says. So that's another part. I'm just going to say, some of the advertising I already do in my own community is quite, quite extensive. We advertise with the Dutch Open Cookoff, we contribute to the FFA auction, we do the Halloween trunk or treat, we donate it to the Women's Club, the Cowbell, we donate sizable amounts to our Fourth of July fireworks show, we donate our property to the parade, we do all these things, and now you want to take more money from my customers so they can spend less money around my community? It's ridiculous. And then what I'd like to know from any one of this audience, does anyone know anything the government can do better than private citizens when it comes to their own money and their own taxes? I'd say the answer to that is no. Government doesn't, isn't more efficient, can't do it better, and I'd like to keep my money, my customers' money, in our community, and not come up here to Reserve where it'll be filtered down into next to nothing. So that's the piece for now.
Can I say something? May I say something? The, the whole subject of the lodger's tax is for discussion only. That's why you don't know what is going to take place.
So what's the publishing then? Where are you publishing?
To publish it to have more public comment, correct?
You have, you have to publish it if there's any type of action or anything.
Mr. Chairman, I might provide a little bit of clarification on that. So there's a statutory process for an ordinance, and that is, the, the board first discusses, discusses it, you know, just preliminarily to see whether or not this is something they'd like to have further discussion on, then presents section 437-7, they direct the publication of the title and general subject matter of the ordinance. People can then come in and request a copy of the draft ordinance to consider it and review it. We'll then have a public hearing at a meeting or at a date that'll be scheduled and noticed in the, in the paper. People then have an option to come in and give their comments to that public hearing on the draft ordinance, and then this board will consider that ordinance for, for action. And based on that public hearing, it could either reject the ordinance, amend the ordinance, or modify the ordinance, or approve the ordinance.
Wow, because none of that was brought up in October. I came here in October. Nobody said a word like that. I wouldn't be dragging, you know, dragging ourselves up here every time complaining about it if somebody would have made that clear. But again, that's transparency. Nobody blames anything.
I believe that the attorneys did mention that statement in the last meeting.
No, they did not. No, they did not. There was no mention that this wasn't actually an action item of any kind. In fact, what I was told last time I was here was that they were going to bring it up for a vote in January. That's what I was told.
I, I need to say something here. I assume you're an attorney?
Yes, ma'am.
With all due respect, I own an oil and gas company, and I do a lot of work with attorneys. It's my professional opinion, having worked in and out Santa Fe all the time, that you're, that this process violates due process, just like this lady had said. You're opening yourself up for a civil lawsuit. You're, you're violating, you're violating a process. This is just like Nancy Pelosi said, well, let's pass the bill to see what's in it. That's what you're doing. You're passing a bill, you're, you're going to have it in front of the commissions without having any due process input into this bill whatsoever. We need to know right up front, we need to have a discussion on how this is going to be drafted, or, or, and I hope this is not like a fish and walleye meeting or a BLM meeting where you come into the meeting and you've already got your mind made up, and, no is not a, is not appropriate answer, like at a Wolf meeting. They have already got their mind made up, they're going to do what they're going to do, and the only way you can have any kind of input into this process is to be for the process or to help move the process along. No should be an appropriate response. No, we don't want it. Thank you.
My name is Vicki Schreiber, co-chief of Reserving Apache Creek EMS Fire, and my, I would start my two minutes with a question. The items on the agenda that deal with the correction to the ambulance fund and to the specifications for the proposed ambulance, will there be discussion allowed from us then, or do I need to say what I need to say now?
This is on the agenda for the ambulance? Oh, we'll...
The, the ambulance fund is, today is to approve the purchase of the ambulance fund.
And is there anything dealing with transferring the grocery receipts tax from our general fund to the corrections fund?
No, not today.
Not today? Will the, will EMS directors be notified when that comes on the agenda?
We already voted to do that.
That's already, that was voted on two months ago.
And we, I don't believe we were notified of that.
Yeah, we had a, we had a public meeting. You guys were here, we discussed it.
It was in July.
And we voted to take that money out of correction, out of ambulance and put it in the general fund, right? Isn't that what we did?
Yes. Okay. Okay, I remember, I was at the July meeting where you tabled it because we had asked you not to do that. So will there be a discussion of the specification for the ambulance?
The specifications were sent through as presented.
The originals, that you presented August 31st?
Yes.
Okay. Gentlemen and ladies, I would ask you to seriously consider approving the specifications for this ambulance. We're in, we are in dire need of replacing one of our units because it's costing us five hundred dollars to fifteen hundred every month that it goes to the shop, and it goes to the shop about every month. And it's not efficient to run right now because we never know when it's going to break down on us. Thank you.
Vicki?
I just, I just want to respond, the specifications are not, that's not up for debate, that's going to go through. The only thing is now is we're approving the procurement side of it, which anything over ten thousand dollars has to be approved. So that's what, so that, once they approve it, we'll move forward, Vicki.
I was asking if it was the specifications that we presented.
Yes, it is. Yes, it is. And we'll move forward with it as soon as this is approved.
Okay, the ones that were presented August 31st?
Yes.
Thank you.
Blaine?
My name is Blaine Awed, my wife and I have the Eagle Bay Ranch in Daddle, and I guess we'll talk about lodger's tax a little bit. I'm not going to talk politics or anything like that, but I'm basically like the rock outside. I remember going in the first meeting when I was eight years old, and my grandpa giving me a whipping and kicking me out. That's the last Commissioner meeting I've been to. But in all reality, Katton County is, is a very unique place, and the geographics of it make it that way. What's good for somebody in Glenwood may not be good for somebody in Comato, Daddle, or Reserve, vice versa. The lodger's tax was in use at one time, and it was a complete failure because of lack of policing. And that's talking to my mother-in-law and other people that were part of it, there were only a few people that paid into it. You know, if you take, if you maxed out my, my motel rooms, three hundred sixty-five days a year, we have eight rooms, and at five percent of what we currently charge now, you're going to make eight thousand dollars. That's, that's what it would be right there. You take the Largo and you double that because they're a bigger place, and then add another, maybe add another eight, another eight thousand, you're still not going to even create enough revenue to, to pay for a position, police it, because you're going to have to. Because nobody, you know, nobody's going to be completely honest about it because it's taxes. I mean, we've all cheated a little bit, and that's, that's out there. Now, from our personal point, point of view as far as, as they're in Daddle, we're, we're like our own little country up there. Police-wise, everything, I mean, we don't get a lot of things that the, the communities with more population get, and, and we understand that, that's why we kind of take care of ourselves. And, you know, the biggest thing is, Daddle's not a destination point. Almost not. Glenwood may be a more of a destination point than any place in Katton County because it has a catwalk, and it has some neat, the hot springs, that's some neat stuff down there, people want to go there. So to be competitive, not be competitive, just to stay in business, we have to kind of do a, a juggling deal as far as prices and everything else to keep people in. You know, we're not like Walmart, you know, if you go into Walmart, you go to the very back aisle of Walmart as far as groceries goes, that's your cheapest, lowest margin products that you can buy. Their beer's back there, they make one cent for every purchase on their alcohol. But the further you go back up that aisle and close to the gas register, those margins start going up. In our community here in Katton County, we don't, we're not allowed that, that privilege. The money's not there. If, in, in our situation, this winter, as soon as all the hunts are over, we're going to be remodeling our bathrooms and motel. We're going to have to raise our prices a little bit to help absorb those costs. Now, at the same time, you raise that up, and, and some of you may have been in rooms, I don't know if you ever have, but they're clean, there's nothing fancy, they've got cable TV, they're good beds. I mean, it's just simple and clean, and we work very hard to keep it like that. But you go, we're going to add those up, add a little bit on to the price we're at now, then you add any more cost with taxes, then it's going to make it real easy to drive right on past us. Because we're a drive-thru, we're a passerby community, and that's how we try to make our money. I agree with what, for the most part, everything that everybody said, and I know, I've known all three of you guys all my life, I've known Bill all my life, and I don't, I know that nobody's made up their minds yet. Now, you also have to look at the finances and everything. You go take my room, or I stayed here in these rooms here, and they're, they're sure enough nice, but you can't go charging eighty bucks for those rooms. You, we have to make money in order for the community to make money. That's just the way it goes, it's like the lady from Glenwood talking about what she puts her advertising money into. My advertising money goes into the fair or into the schools, that's it. That's why we don't buy anything else. And that's very beneficial to us. You start taking away from now, you start taking away from there. And it's not about the, the part that you pass on the cost to the consumer, because actually, we're already taxing them. Now we're going to double tax them. You know, and, and I never even thought about the point, taking the money, well, I'm going to have to pay a little bit more here for this room, or this RV park, or whatever, and now I can't go buy that present I wanted to buy, or whatever. You know, we have to, we have to consider just the economics of everything, you know, more so than anything, I, I think. You know, and, and, just, and, and you know, and one last thing I'll leave you with too here, I think in order to put forth a tax, it has to be set out here and there. I understand you're probably in developmental issue or phases of that. Katton County cannot take another, another tax, in my opinion. And I think, and you're dealing, you're telling, everybody, all the major players as far as, you know, the motel industry or, or that kind of industry is right, is right here in this room, and they're all telling you no. Well, except this lady. But that goes back to my point, what's good for her is not necessarily good for us. Does that make sense? And, you know, that's, that's basically my feel. And I know two of you are in your last leg of your tenure as Commissioners, we appreciate your service, and I know that both of you are staunch conservatives. I don't believe, in all, in all, in everything I can believe in, that you guys would want to lead your tenure here adding another tax to already suffering economy of this county. Thank you for your time.
Y'all knew this was coming.
My name is Jennifer Swenson. I am the owner of both the Frisco Lodging Company here in the Village of Reserve and Hidden Springs Inn that is out of Montrose Grande. I have to say, while we have all the high players here of the lodging industry in this room, I am legitimately the only one at this juncture that has had any experience with lodger's tax. Because the Village of Reserve has a lodger's tax that was passed several years ago, and I have had the responsibility of both collecting and remitting it. And I really can't deal with fake news. The fake news that is being put forth today is the fact that people will not come to Reserve, Glenwood, Daddle, Comato, and spend extraneous money because at five percent, when they have an eighty-dollar room, they're going to be paying a whole whopping four extra dollars. That is not only false, but that is shock and awe, and I, I don't, I don't want to put that forward anymore. People come here to Reserve, pay the lodger's tax, which I believe, Andre, help me remember, I think it's five point something.
I thought it was five solid, but I'm not sure.
Yeah, it's probably five percent. That's what they're paying when they come here. Two things that I will tell you straight up, not only do they not notice that they're paying it, they never ask nor care. They come here, they buy their cappuccinos at one of my restaurants, they spend money at Black Gold, they spend money at all the local businesses, and the really cool thing about that is, when they come here and they spend money, we're getting a little portion to help Reserve. It helps Black Gold, it helps Jakes, it helps everyone, because what we're doing is we're using that money for the community. And I am super excited to see us pass the lodger's tax, because then not only will we be collecting and remitting and helping Reserve, we will be collecting and remitting and helping Daddle. And I'm sorry, my, my background is in small business, that's what I went to college for. And when we are raising money and we're putting it back into tourism, it helps everybody, not just my business, not just the lodgers, it helps the gas merchants. Because what we're doing is we're saying, you know what, you may not have come to Daddle for staying with us in particular, but here's some things that you can do while you're here to stay around and stay an extra night. And I would love it if during this process, you would talk to the people of the Village of Reserve, because they have experience in this, they know what this is about, they understand, you will not talk to a vendor here locally that is against it, because they see it's been a shot in the arm for our community. And I want that for Glenwood, and I want that for Daddle, and I want that for Comato, and I'm not going to be selfish enough to say it's extra work for me, and then I have to hold the state money and remit it to you guys. To me, that's part of helping my community and benefiting everybody across the board in the tourism business. And that is the only way that we can increase our tourism business. I can throw money at advertising here and advertising in there, but if we were able to do really incredible things, like pay to have a tour bus that goes up to Mungiaon because people don't want to drive that road, if we were able to do things like pay to have a Pi Town pavilion put up so that they can make the Pi Town festival even bigger, you know what, that's incredible stuff, that's huge stuff, and I'm sorry, I'm not going to be able to financially sustain that as a business owner myself. But if we come together and we pass this piddly five percent, then you know what, good for all of us.
I understand your point of view here in the Village of Reserve.
Not all the way. I have a...
You have options. You come to Glenwood and you have pizza Tuesday, Thursday, Saturday from four to seven thirty, period. You don't have the attractions. Yes, we have the catwalk, and, and the county's done great in helping us rebuild the catwalk. We are trying to make our location a destination itself to bring business to our community. When people come, our people aren't people with money, they count every dime. We get people from Las Cruces, we get people from, that try to talk me down on my roof.
That's everywhere.
No, it's not.
Oh, trust me.
And I've done the lodger's tax before. I did it...
I did it at my hotel in Houston. And it started out as nine percent, then it went to twelve percent, then it went to fourteen percent. Because there's no cap on what this can be. It's a tax. It's gonna bring in the amount of money that the county needs to generate money in other places. Between here, it's forty-five minutes between each place. If you're lucky. If you go to Katron County, if you go to Buggy's House and you come here with a ten to four minute hour. And now we have the ability to open a second hotel in Glenwood. But that costs a lot of money. You gotta bring it up to code because it wasn't in code. But we can't be spending money and then take a small little hotel and get sixty dollars for a room. And then you want to add taxes upon that, then we're pricing ourselves out of business. And then maybe they will come to Reserve, but they'll bypass us.
If they can't spend free, they don't go over there.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Chairman, Board of Directors. This is public comment. This is not a time of debate between you people. We're here to listen to what you have to say, and we're gonna listen to everybody.
Well, it's my turn, and I have the floor, so.
All right, fine. But you're debating with this lady back there. Keep your comments to us, and the rest of you, let him make his comments. He has a right here, he has a right to say.
The commissioners electing the back need to also.
And we have later done that, as we have let you do it, Wayne.
Thank you.
I'm gonna keep order. This is a meeting, a government meeting, and we're gonna keep this orderly here. And I'm kind of stepping on Commissioner Snyder here.
All right, good job.
But I guarantee you, any kind of disrespectfulness to one another in here, and we can't hear what all of you have represented and want to know, we'll clear this room and end this meeting.
Last year, we spent ten thousand dollars between our lodge and promoting our community. We provided the beef for the cowbell's barbecue. We cooked the cowbell's barbecue. We provide a trunk-or-treat for Halloween where we raised fourteen hundred dollars for the parties. We asked the commission for help in our county, and we were told, we can't do that because there's too many places. And that makes sense. So, our community takes it upon itself. We have a duty to operate for the Fourth of July. We don't ask for any other. Everything that we do, the businesses pull together, and we promote our community. And our community's getting better. I've only been here five years, I'm not even really a New Mexican yet. According to some people, I've been here twenty years. I'm just a Yankee from Texas. But the money that we spend, we spend wisely. We haven't drawn a salary in five years. We haven't gotten paid because there's too many things to improve to make Glenwood better. And the more that we can use our money to do what we need to do, if five percent, three dollars, that's nothing to anybody. Well, that's something from people at the Saturday Market. That's something from Mario's. That's something from my store. It's something from the Alma Grill. It's something from the Alma Store. It's trickled down. The, you're making grocery receipts on all the money. I'm not sure how much the county gets from that versus the state. But three dollars is three dollars. And to me, that's a lot of money. We do reunions, we do weddings. If they have an option going here or going to the Bear Creek Lodge and at five percent difference, it might cut us out. We're just trying to make a difference.
What was your name again? I didn't catch your name.
My name's Kerry Ruth. I'm the one who called your hand. I'm very sorry, I got big fingers.
I'm quite a wreck.
My phone's really small. And I don't spell very well. But I'm a really good businessman. I know how to take something and make it from nothing. But I don't need help doing it. That's what I was trained fifty years to do. And if you guys leave me to my own devices and my wife and the other businesses in the county to our own devices, you'll be surprised what we can do. This county's come a long way in five months, in five years. And it's our goal to make it even better. I want to pay grocery receipts tax. If I pay a lot of grocery receipts tax, that means I'm taking in a lot of money. And that's my goal. Thank you for your time.
I just wanted to clarify one thing, Mr. Ruth. There is a cap in New Mexico for the lodger's tax. And I'm not in no way saying this because I approve of the lodger's tax, but facts are facts. There is a cap in New Mexico. Texas may not have one, but we're not Texas.
What is the cap?
I think it's six percent. So, there's a cap. I mean, we can't keep raising it up to nineteen percent. But this is New Mexico's lodger's tax rules, not Texas.
And that's decided by. And they're not subjects to changing their mind when they need more money?
They haven't for how many years for the lodger's tax? Believe it or not, they haven't touched it. The cities, I mean, the Burn Leo County may have.
The lodger's tax, uh, Mr. Chairman, the lodger's tax act was actually, it was first adopted way back in the, probably the sixties, hasn't been adopted. It was changed in two thousand nineteen to remove the provision to allow for things like Airbnb. That's the only change that's been by the legislature. That was in two thousand nineteen. And that was the exemption that we discussed earlier, that was removed.
Oh, yeah, the cap would be five percent. It wouldn't, I mean, if this is something that everybody wanted. Now, when this was brought up the last time, the individuals that were sitting in the commission meeting agreed to meet with all the lodgers across the county and form your own citizens' chamber of commerce, and nothing has happened with that.
I live across the street to the east from the commissioner. I live to the south of the commissioner, directly, and no one's approached me by anything.
No, that was discussed at the meeting, and that's why we had, that's why we're like, okay, we'll just let you guys deal with it. I'm just making that statement, I don't want discussion about it, I'm just making that statement.
Well, but I gotta correct that though, because there has been stuff. All the things we mentioned in Glenwood, we don't do it countywide because we're too far away from.
And that's fine, but the discussion that we had in that commission, that meeting where we discussed it is, you guys were banded together across the county, and that was not done. And I was kind of disappointed in that because I was really hoping you guys could have formed your own citizens' chamber and was able to work this out on your own, and the lodger's tax would die, go away, we wouldn't have to deal with it because you all banded together and did it for the best of the county. And I'm just making that statement, I'm not asking you to do that. I'm not saying I'm for it, I'm not saying I'm against it. Again, it's just a discussion. And that was one thing that I did recognize, that that discussion that we had several years ago did not follow through.
Well, we do it through email and through cell phones. We say, this is what we're doing, and the whole community gets involved. We get sixty cars out for trunk-or-treat. We raise four.
I'm talking countywide, because that was the discussion we had. Is that the county came through and all banded together for a citizens' chamber. That's it.
Commissioner, I'm sorry, Commissioner Han. With the environment that's in Santa Fe right now, I don't believe anyone could depend upon the five percent max. The people that are up there right now that are in charge of state government is a tax-and-spend socialist movement. And, and I'm just telling you that they're gonna increase that tax. There is no question about it. And so, that's the comment I want to say. You can't depend upon five percent. Thank you.
Any other?
I have a constant, not for the subject. I have a complaint that I want to lodge just in the public because I want other people to know what's going on. County has a personnel policy that establishes positions in the county as far as job description, you know, sets out the different kinds of job levels and such. But there's an issue that's come up over the last months that's frustrating, to say the least. I worked for five years as the accounts payable clerk in the commission office, and I made essentially a deputy clerk salary. A deputy clerk's salary right now is about, um, it's a, oh, nine, six, eight hundred and something dollars, I think. About eight hundred dollars a month, about per patriot, you know, twice a month, every two weeks. However, the person upstairs that does the payroll right now is making the same amount of money that a chief deputy is making. They should be making a deputy clerk's salary. The person that does accounts payable, and I know she does other things besides that, makes more than an elected official by over a hundred dollars per patriot. That's just not right. And it's frustrating. And the other person, the assistant county manager makes as much as an elected official right now. She makes the same salary. That's just not right. It means, it's okay for the rest of the courthouse, but it's not okay for the commission office. And it's just, I'm sorry, that's just not right. And I'm frustrated with that because where was that decided? It wasn't decided in this meeting. Now, the assistant county manager, yes, her position was set aside differently, and that's okay, that's all fine. But the other positions in there, they just kind of arbitrarily got these huge paychecks. And frankly, I don't think they deserve them. As another employee in the courthouse. And I'm just, it's just irritating. And I just want you all to be aware of it, and I know that other people in the courthouse are definitely aware of it and don't like it either. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Jennifer Chapel, and I have the Largo and Camato. And I agree with these people here and disagree with the one lady. And I just want to say that we're opposed to the tax. I can't really say anything more to what everybody else has said. I agree.
Thank you for keeping it short.
I kept it short.
I'll keep it really short, because all I have is a question. See if I can get on here. When I went to the water board meeting Monday, an item came up about a two-hundred-and-fifty-million-dollar bond that had something to do with the Wain Farm. And I wondered, it was a taxable bond. So, it basically, a taxable bond is for things that are not really of prime importance to the county. So, I wondered if anybody knew about that, or I've never heard of it when the Wain Farm discussions were made. That's my only question.
Mr. Chairman, I'd be happy to visit with Mr. Garden at our intermission or after.
At our break.
Thank you, Dave.
Any other?
I'll make a brief comment. I can't speak for anyone else. I know that when I travel, everywhere I go, there's lodger's taxes, there's resort fees as part of the bill. You know, I take that into consideration when I travel. I know that if the room says sixty-nine dollars, it's not sixty-nine dollars. There's gonna be resort fees, lodger fees, parking fees. Many times, there's other things. And again, I can't speak for anybody else, and I know maybe some of the people traveling through here, that is a consideration to them. But that's just a point I want to make. Like, I don't know if research has been done as what other places have a lodger's tax in the state or in the country, but everywhere I go, they seem to have them. And that's all I have to say.
Anyone else? Wait a second. No, we'll move on.
Last year, I traveled four places, and I was forced to stay in motels that had lodger's tax. One was Fountain Hills, Arizona, which is an upper-end place and being part of Scottsdale, Arizona. I stayed in a Comfort Inn room that was exactly like the one in Albuquerque. In Albuquerque, the room with my county and senior citizen discount, it comes about sixty-nine dollars, and I pay a little lodger's fee there. I don't know how much. But in Fountain Hills, my bill was a hundred and sixty-nine dollars. And I paid forty-one dollars in lodger's tax. Now, hold on, I got the floor, and I'm gonna talk to you. Forty-one dollars to me was, I can't imagine as beautiful as Fountain Hills is and as much as they have going on there. The golf courses, all the lakes, and all the running things. I was forced to stay there. Because I'm sure as hell that I stayed there because I thought that was gouging, as best. another thing I wanted to bring up is something Mr. Ruth said. I live right across the street from Hem and Carter's. I've never in any way refused to take a phone call or have any of you drive to my house and talk to me about anything. And my bad was, I was unaware that this lodger's tax thing was on the agenda this week. But during this time, I was accused of being greedy. I was told that I was for the lodger's tax. I've never told anybody in this room, or sure as hell no place else, that I've been a proponent of lodger's tax or against it. I'm a county legislator here, and when one person comes in and talks about their beliefs against lodger's tax, there are other people that are gonna come in and say, well, I'm for it. And they have that right, and I'm gonna listen. But why is it that someone will get on social media and not drive to my house as a neighbor and just ask of me? Instead of put it out there on social media and my phone numbers to badger and to make it sound like that I lack integrity in this process? I'm not a greedy person. How the hell am I gonna get moneyed up in this deal? Or what do you know what I think about this lodger's tax? Nobody here does. Nobody here knows what my mind is. I'm gonna listen to everybody. I want to know, how much tax are we gonna charge from each place? And how many participants in this county are gonna participate in this? And how much money is it really gonna raise across the county? And then this county commission, when they, if they enact this, they're gonna have to form a board to decide what it is that's gonna happen with this money. How are we gonna use this money? I'm sorry, but I'm a conservative Republican, and somebody said something about conservative politics. You know, I just, I don't like the news. I don't think a board is gonna help our county's advertise one way or the other. I've also been a business person. Found out that people that have restaurants have to now have to leave people get training on about how to prepare food, how to serve food. Their waitresses are gonna have to have training how to serve food. RV parks are gonna have to have, instead of one sewer tank, now they're gonna have to have three sewer tanks to treat chlorine. Liquor people already have to have server training. Boy, you know, that's a mopey of a bunch of nonsense in this state. When Walmart can buy direct off of a truck and make a penny, and the rest of us have to go to one buyer and pay a tax, you know? But nobody in this county has the right to accuse me or Anita of having greed or lapping behavior in this whole process. What should have happened was what a couple of people in my town done. Picked up a phone and called me and said, where are you at? How do you feel about this? You know, I haven't, I haven't made up my mind. I don't even know that I even, a little bit would like to see this lodger's tax happen in this county. That's where I'm at, Senator.
Commissioner, are we allowed to talk to you?
Right now, I have the floor. I'm gonna keep it. I don't know that I'm gonna rebut with you, Wayne.
No, no, I don't want to rebut.
I'm just, I'm just gonna tell you right now that I haven't made up my mind. But I sure as hell don't like people accusing me of lacking integrity or making my mind up or being greedy. Maybe I'm not supposed to say that in this. Maybe I'm not supposed to say that in this. And if that's the case, impeach me, Adam. And I don't like it when people come into this room and use Nancy Pelosi or that circus and compare this board, if that's what was going on, comparing this board to that kind of circus. Because I've known these two people a long, long time. I knew his family, and Anita's family, and my family have served this county and worked hard and done a lot of things. In the seven years that I've sat here in this seat, you know, I felt like that I was blessed to get the chance to do this until Monday night.
Commissioner, are we allowed to talk to you outside of this meeting?
Sure you are. You're allowed to come to my house. You're allowed to pick up the phone. How many times you driven into my yard, Wayne?
A lot.
Why did you think you couldn't come to my yard before this meeting?
Well, I just didn't realize that it would be...
You believe what other people were assuming and saying about me?
No, no, I don't. No, I haven't.
That's the way I feel today.
I have no clue as to what you're talking about. I've been totally expunged from that. I don't, if you're directing that at me, that's wrong, Bucky. I'm sorry, but I don't know anything about that.
I'm just, I'm just letting everybody know, and I'll sit and I'll come down here, and I apologize to you for leaving my chair. But I think I have a damn good reason for doing it.
We'll kind of talk...
I haven't made up my mind about lodger's tax. And whenever it comes to lawsuits and the legality, I can't, I can't even start to tell you how much I think of these three attorneys that are sitting here. And you know, when I put my faith in whether I'm going to be sued or sued, or when I ask for some legal advice, when David Pata or Adrian or Kathy say something to me, I take it right to heart. That's where I'm going every time. One thing I want to leave you folks with is that if you want to talk to me about this and explain your concerns and where you're at, because I've been in business, I know somebody is going to pay that fee. And it's hard to get people to come to Glenville. It's hard to get people to come to Camato. It's hard to get people to come to Davenport. We're up against it from every side with all of these environmental issues that come and lock everybody off and close everybody out. And we fight the wolf, you know? We have other things. We have wow in Seagull River that's nothing more than a walk-off. And it's a staging litigation to sue private property. That's all the hell it is. All of these things are against us. So, why do we set ourselves up to have a tax that to me is not very welcoming? That's just the way I look at it. And man, I mean, I really feel in my heart that we milk this thing out, and we went around the neighborhood, and we kicked under every rock we could to make somebody pay this. I don't think we're collecting that money to really amount to anything. Mr. Nads tells me that in Socorro, Socorro County makes about 2,500 a year.
2,500 a year.
Okay. Mr. Paxton, Commissioner Paxton from Sierra County, they have that Elephant Beach Lake. They have a lot more over there, and they collect about $6,000 a year. That's not much advertising. And all this nonsense about how that arena is built beside of Socorro with lodger's tax, what a joke. That's probably several million dollars. So, anyway, here's the long and short of it. Anybody's welcome to come and sit down and talk to me and ask me. But I won't be bullied. I won't have people lobby and bully me and tell me I better be for it, or I better be against it, or I better do this. Because if you want things to go sour with me, just do that. Thank you for listening, and please forgive me for losing my temper.
I think this commission has been really good about being open for discussion and not making our decisions based on our personal opinion. And that's why I appreciate the dialogue that's taking place. Even with your post where you spelled my name, Roman Catrin County, I thanked you for at least encouraging the debate. The debate is what helps us make the decision. None of us came in here saying we are for this or we are absolutely against it. Referring to us as being like Fish and Wildlife Services, that's below the knees, Buck. That's like, them are like, let's go out behind the tool shed. Nancy Pelosi and Fish and Wildlife Services, that was low blow. But I appreciate your comments. I still appreciate the discussion. Blaine and I have gone round and around several times on different issues, not just the lodger's tax. But that's what being elected official is, is you take the comments from the public and you take that into consideration. I don't think there's any one of us up here that came in here saying, "Well, I'm going to do this because it's what I want." That's why this is the discussion. We have not made a decision. None of us have it, no, no. It's a discussion only. And I appreciate all the discussion, and I think everybody's thinking the same thing. That's how government should work, public interaction with elected officials. People choose to stay home and not voice their concerns, and how do we know how they feel? That's all.
Yeah, I guess since we're discussing this, I'll just say what I got to say. Bucky brought up last month that he would like to know how much he could collect from this. I have a hard time seeing how we move forward until we know what we could collect. We've got several business people here that would be affected by this tax. I would like them to come up with some numbers so we could kind of have an idea of how much we could collect. Because the way I look at this is if we were to pass this lodger's tax, we would have to hire a person full-time to enforce this. It's like Blaine said, most people aren't going to pay this to us unless we see to it that they pay it. And a lot of people won't even know we paid it. Anybody out there housing hunters is going to be subject to this tax. If they're staying at your place, from reading what I've read about this tax, you're going to collect that tax from it. Most of them won't even know we have this tax unless we go and see to it that we collect it. I'm not going to pass an ordinance. I've seen it happen in this county. I've worked for this county for 27 years. And I've seen ordinance after ordinance passed that nobody follows. If I pass an ordinance, we're going to, we're going to do it. I'm not going to pass an ordinance and then walk away. I'm going to see to it that we collect this money and that it's done the way we passed it. So, we're going to have to hire a person to do this. So, what's it going to cost? Can we even collect that much money? Now, I know it's a little hard to come up with those numbers, but I think we need to before we, before we go throw something on people. Here I've got four people here that would be directly affected by this tax, vote no right now and want four. And my position has been, I want to know that the people want this. If the people don't want this, why would I subject myself to this? I agree with Jennifer, is what she says. I think, I think she's right. I think it's the way you look at business. But I first need to know how much we're going to collect, because I want to make sure we do it right if we're going to do it. And that's, no more comment on that. This is how I look at it. We've already voted. That's why I don't understand why we have this even on the agenda. It takes the hell out of me. Excuse my language. We already voted to publish this thing, and we'll have a public hearing where everybody can say what they have to say. But I don't want to hear, I don't want to, I don't want to hear anything that's not going to help me. Blaine did a good job of selling his point. Jennifer did a good job of selling her point. You guys had something good for me to say, to hear. Educate yourself. If we're going to publish this, we'll see to it that you have, have it. We'll see to it that you know what we're fixing to do. I got elected to this thing to make some changes. And I, I'm just here to do what the people really want. I'm not here to railroad anybody, tell anybody what to do. But I would like to make some improvements in this county. But you have to sell me, you know? If, you know, I like salesmen, you know? Let's, give me the arguments, you know? So, everybody go back, and I don't think we're going to do anything with this today. We already voted to publish this thing. Unless one of these two want to take their vote back, we, we're going to publish this, and we're going to have a public meeting, and we're, and then, but I don't think you pass something like this by just having one public meeting. And I think we need a lot of facts. So, I would like you people, you know, that's kind of digging into your business, but that's what we're going to do. If we, if we pass this tax, we're going to have the ability to audit you. So, we will be digging into your business. I want you guys to tell me how much money you collect that we can possibly tax. If it's $60 for a room, that's three bucks. And I don't know how business people do that, because if I'm going to be doing this, I'm going to charge $3 for that room, but then now I've got to collect the tax, I've got to report to the county, and I've got to keep good records. So, it's costing me something to collect that tax. So, I'm going to have to add a little bit more to that bill to pay for my time. So, it's not just three bucks, it's whatever you decide your time's worth. So, your room rates are going to go up. That's business. So, I understand what we're proposing and what, what you have to do to get it. And will it help the county in any way? How much could, here's, if we can't collect enough to pay the position, it's not going to help the county. We're just paying somebody to do paperwork. So, that's enough said about it. But we're going to move forward, because we already voted to move forward. So, we'll publish this thing, you'll all get, you'll all hear before, so you can come. But don't look at it like we're trying to do something to you. I would like to actually help you. But if you don't think I can help you, then I'll listen to you, and we'll forget the whole thing. But that's the way I see my position. I'm trying to help you, and I understand if I pass a tax, that's not always a good thing. Tax is a bad word. But if it would help the county, that's what we're here for. So, get your arguments together, but present it, present, present us facts so I can, so I can make a good decision. I want to make good decisions, not halfway, "That sounds good, let's just go do it," and then, and then we walk around three years later and say, "Why did we do that?" Or five years later. That was one thing that I, I took, I want to make a decision, because I want to think about what's it going to look like in 10 years. From 10, the decision I make today, we may not know what's, if it's good or bad for 10 years. That's why we need a lot of information before we do something like this. All right, the end of that discussion. We won't bring out any more today, hopefully. All right, let's move on to the department and agency report. Forest service report. Anybody from the Forest Service?
We apparently don't have anybody here.
Managers report.
It's 10 after 10. I will, I will be brief. It's been very muddy in the county.
Yeah.
We've got a lot of calls about the roads and stuff, and that's the way it goes, is as it dries out, our road crews are going to be out there. They know the problems, just want, just want everybody in the county to know. We do know it's muddy. We do know you have ruts. I apologized last week. I did have to leave early to go pull my daughter home, because she was stuck sideways in a road. And it's that, it's that way. I've got, I've got, I've got a ditch that I drive, not a road, it seems like now. But the crews are aware of that, and we will get to it as soon as possible. The other thing I'd like to bring up is, is, is we have, we have private, we have private companies, or ranches, or whatever, that are calling the county, expecting them to pull them out. In dire circumstances, the county is there to help out the public, but we're not there as a service to take a feed truck, haul, you know, pull a feed truck into a ranch and stuff like that. That needs to be something, you plan that and get that in on the freeze and get that done. We're not a, we're not a towing service, and we do have towing businesses that can be called throughout the county. Where the county can help, I'm sure they will, and if the commissioners make a decision. But right now, they're not, they're not a call and come pull me out because I'm stuck. They, they don't, they don't do that. And we have a lot of people that are new in the county and stuff, and maybe don't understand that. Sometimes we have tough winters in Catrin County, and it's, it's a way, it's a way of For the most part, Mr. Chairman, the things in the county is, is running, running well. We're doing some improvements on the, on the, in the sheriff's offices now with the floor improvement. We're still working on ballot leaks. We're still setting legislative priorities for improvements and money to, to go after to make those improvements. The fairground committee is, has, is working on making improvements on the fairgrounds. We're going to discuss generators later, because we did have a, have an emergency in the county a week ago. Things, I think, I think the county reacted in the best way they possibly could, and maybe we can make improvements on that. But I'll stand for questioning.
Any questions?
Connie is not here today. She provided a written report within your, and she's, she said if there's any questions, please feel free to visit. So, you will have to make a motion to approve the, the, the report as provided written documentation.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Green has called people from Connie's office. Everybody, Connie's not there.
It's fine.
I didn't, I didn't ask you, Steve. I'm talking to Mr. Green, okay? And I'm sorry to be so sharp about that. I realize that you're just trying to do that, but I'm not, I'm not myself. What'd you ask for a question?
She did come by the office today, and they are, they are kind of inundated with getting things done before the end of the year. And she asked if she would be able just to send that in, to present the written report and had, have calls or questions if there's needed. She said they were very busy.
All right. I would, I would thank for the future that maybe, you know, it's hard perhaps to make a motion on the treasurer's report, because this is a critical part of, of our meetings, Mr. Chairman. And, you know, I don't know how the commissioner answers, I have an idea, but for myself, it's hard for me to go ahead and pass this or vote on it, you know? They'll have some explanation, but today I will.
You could table it. You could vote to table it.
I don't think I want to do that. I'm going to do basically here what the other commissioners think. I've talked to them.
I just talked to Connie this morning, so I'm really not prepared to present in her, in her, on her report.
Okay.
So, once I actually don't have any questions to tell Angela, so I do appreciate it when she's here, so she can answer my questions. Oops, I do have a question. I'll have to call on her. But I will make the motion to approve the financial report as presented.
I'll second that. All in favor?
Aye.
Let's take a quick break. Take a bite, gentlemen. Take about a ten minute break here.
Oh, he's way back. I know, you need to get it.
Uh, he's back to order. We'll move down to the wolf report. We've got Robert Gosnell, we call it AFIS, Wildlife Services, they're the guys that deal with it. Deal with the wolves whenever they do bad things, we'll bring him up to, have a discussion. And if you guys don't help, you come up and, I guess, introduce yourself.
Hi, I'm Rob Gosnell, I'm the new state director here in New Mexico for Wildlife Services. We deal in all depredation, wildlife damage, type depredation or anything wildlife damage-wise. So, you know, our first mandate by Congress is wildlife damage management, so we're here for, we're here for the people, that's what we're here for. There's agencies and things that I have to deal with, other federal agencies and things like that, that dictate, because that's where some of the money comes from, but, just to know that we are here, and anytime you need us, just call us and we'll be there. And I can take any questions you have, I'll give you a rundown real quick on what the things I've done since I've been here. We didn't have a, we didn't have a full-time quote specialist assigned to Mexican gray wolves, so I turned around and did that right away, even though Fish and Wildlife Service funds the program, but they haven't given us any funding this year. But anyway, I went ahead and signed somebody, which is Stephen, everybody knows Stephen, he's in this county. And so he'll be, he'll be, the Mexican gray wolf is his first mission, so anytime there's a call, day or night, weekends, whatever, he's going on that call. If they need additional help to that, then we'll do that. And then another thing that I heard was that the, the ranchers aren't getting paid timely from Fish and Wildlife Service, and I don't know if it has to do with their reports, I mean, I meet with fish, but they're only gonna give me so much information, whether in our dealings and everything, but, later on, I'm, I'm losing my disease biologist, so I'm gonna hire a staff biologist that's gonna do the NEPA and do the, do the Mexican gray wolf work on the reports, and make sure those reports get in timely to the, to the US Fish and Wildlife Service, the people who get paid, or Farm Service Agency, whatever means they're going through. Uh, we're gonna put a lot of emphasis, um, the Mexican gray wolf is probably our number one project right now, you know, and then, and then we'll still continue with all the other projects that we have going on. So, anybody, any questions?
I have a question. What can be done to get the reimbursement rate from seventy-five percent up to a hundred percent?
So, that's a fishing wildlife deal, so, I'm always telling, I, I meet with them all the time, 'cause they're a partner of ours, and I tell them, "Hey, pay the people what they get, you know, pay the value of the animal." Of course, I don't get to dictate their policy, that's internal. I would say for, for you all, what you need to do is legislatively wise, approach it from that side and put pressure, you have to put pressure on them, or they're not gonna do it, I mean, I, our sister state there, Arizona, they get paid pretty quickly, and, and I hear they get more money, I don't know if that's true or not, I haven't verified that, but that's what I hear. We want the same thing to happen for New Mexico.
Have you already hired this physician to, that, that's going to work on the, the Mexican wolf, the biologist?
No, no, it's, it's in the, it, that probably won't happen until the second and third quarter of the year.
And so, do you expect that person to be working with our person?
Well, Stephen's gonna work with, with Jess as a field. This guy, so, when I said NEPA, Natural Environmental Protection Agency, we have to have NEPA to do predator work, and our NEPA is due now. And the people that sign off on NEPA, it's Fish and Wildlife Service. So I need somebody to come in, we're rewriting the Predator EA right now, the Dino Impact Statement. So, once we get that done, that's gonna give us more freedom to do more work, and that's what our goal is. And that, he's mainly gonna be an admin-type paper person, that's got collateral duties, but he's gonna make sure that the paperwork goes through timely and properly, and if there are questions to be asked, to ask those questions, or bring it to me right away, instead of waiting, you know, till last minute. I wanna be on top of it, I wanna be ahead of them, one step ahead, and say, "Hey, you need to help us, come help us out, you know, what, what's going on here?", and be able to give you guys answers when we come.
So you're not, you're not trying to supersede, um, the work that Jess carries?
Oh, no, no, they work in partnership, I, I think that's important, and that's what, I meet with fish all the time, because they're, they're our quote inter-agency corporator for the wolf work, because we don't get any federal money for wolf work, they just don't give it to us, they give it to them. So I gotta get the money from them. So, I'm always meeting with them, saying, "Hey, I need money, I need money", even though we're still manning the position, but I still put that pressure on. But I told them, I said, "Look, you know, we had the BP oil spill down in Louisiana, I was there, and we got both sides to come together and do the investigations as one." It works out better, 'cause everybody's happy. Because you know you're getting what, you know you're getting your money's worth out of your guy, we're getting our money's worth out of our guy, and we're all working, it's all about the ranchers, is what it's about. You know, the ranchers, they're the ones suffering, they're the ones suffering, and when they lose cattle, or they, or, or any kind of event that happens with the wolves, you know, be it pressure or whatever, causes them to lose cattle, that, that's what we wanna prevent, and that's what we wanna stop.
So just to give you a little bit of history on the wolf program in Catherine County, several years ago Catherine County filed, uh, a complaint with the inspector general in DC regarding a biologist and the wolf program, um, falsifying documentation and scientific data, they were manipulating the data, and submitting that to Fish and Wildlife Services. So you have to understand, having a biologist coming in, um, is red flags for me, because I definitely do not want that biologist to be setting us back another twenty years, and taking the paperwork that Jess has done, and then, and that, what, what Fish and Wildlife Services did with, with their biologist is why the county had to hire its own investigator.
What did the, let me ask you this, who did that biologist work for?
Fish and Wildlife Services.
The one that did, was falsifying data?
Mm-hmm. But, but it doesn't matter if they're working for Wildlife Services or Fish and Wildlife, because that biologist still superseded, and tried to supersede, the documentation that the county submitted when it came to wolf depredations, and I need some assurance that your biologist is not gonna take that paperwork and say, "Oh, Jess is wrong, this is not a wolf depredation."
That's, that's not gonna happen, so, so I'll, I'll back up there a little bit, so first of all, nobody in Wildlife Services supersedes me in this state, period, so, I'm definitely not gonna let that happen. And when I, when I hire somebody, I'm gonna hire with the purpose, you know, you interview people, you get their input in what they're doing, what they're capable of, and, and, and how, and what they know about damaged biology and things like that, um, and then, and secondly, we're mandated by Congress to be wildlife damage agency, that's what we do. So my fir-, my first and foremost thing is to the people of the county, that's, that's who I'm, that's who I work for, basically, you know, I come and talk to you guys and everything, we work for the people. And that's how we're gonna do this when, as time goes on. I think you'll be happy once you see the end results, because I want somebody that can talk to Fish and Wildlife and be on the same playing field, and say, "No, I know damage", 'cause Wildlife Services, we've got over a hundred and forty years of damaged data and stuff, up there at NWRC in Fort Collins. I was in Colorado the last three days, and I met with my counterparts in Arizona, Colorado, and Texas, just to talk about Mexican gray wolf stuff, and the approaches we're gonna take, and how we're gonna work protocols and things, because they're in Colorado now. They're probably gonna go to Texas, not, you know, they're not gonna get put there, it's a big wide open space, they're going someday, because the population's going up, we all know that. So we all wanna work together, because being a federal agency, we can cross state lines and everything, that doesn't bother us, and we all work together. So if there's a problem going on, we say, "Hey, you're in this area, my guy's heading down, can you catch it right now?", "They'll be there soon, blah, blah, blah." But those, it's a serious, it's a serious condition to us, and, and we're concerned, we're very concerned about it, and we wanna do something about it, and, and us all doing it together, my, my counterpart in the state directors and other states, makes it a lot easier for us to approach our supervisors and management and the DC level, to get more help and things like that.
So, um, you had stated that Stephen is gonna be working a lot closer with Jess, which is fine, and I think Stephen has been doing a phenomenal job since he's came, since he's come to the county. Is that gonna take away from his ability for other predator control, because we still have mountain lion bears and coyotes, and the coyotes are out of control?
And what I've told really to do is, I said, "Look, until we get some other specialists on board", which we do have those in the pipeline to hire, that he's actually asked for two, but it takes a lot of hiring, if they're gonna do it, but it's not like an overnight thing. So, we're gonna pull people from other places when they need help to help them. So everything's gonna be covered, 'cause I told them, I said, "Make sure we don't lose from one program to the other, and just transfer stuff around, I want, we still stay top notch all across the area."
So because the wheels of government run so slow, keep in mind that we're getting close to a busy time with wolf depredations, what is the busy time, February, March, and April, or?
He'll start, he'll start getting a lot of calls every single day.
And the second question I have for you is, with your NEPA document that you're going to be submitting, are you gonna allow any local government?
Oh yeah, it gets published, and we, we share it with you guys way ahead of time. We're putting it together first, and once our NEPA people say it's sound, then we put it out to you guys, "Okay, review this, if you got any concern, tell us", then we bring it back, we adjust it again, once everybody, all the partners are on board, then we put it out for public review. We'll be on public review for thirty days, and then it comes back and gets signed.
I just wanna make sure that local government listens.
Anything we do, we're definitely gonna cooperate with, you know, I want your input, how can I figure out what to do if I don't have your input?
So, you came in, you dedi-, you designated one guy, that's what he does is the wolf depredation, what's his name?
Stephen Gonteen.
He's back there. So, now we, we have one guy that's designated that, you're talking about hiring a biologist, but he's not gonna go out in the field and do the necropsies, he's gonna be more the...
He's gonna be the admin, paper pusher, NEPA, uh, he's, they're called staff biologists, and they do all the staffing biological work that has to be done, 'cause we have mandates, we have to satisfy federally. So, if I can have those satisfied ahead of time, that helps everybody else out, you know, to get things done.
So you're thinking, that biologist will help to get the ranchers paid sooner?
Just everything, to help with everything.
Help with everything, 'cause we were getting rumors that this biologist was gonna go out and do necropsies and...
No, he'll go out and see what's going on, he's gonna go see what we do, that's it, you know, and that's what, you know, the one thing I did when I came here too, I told my supervisors, they need to start getting out in the field with their employees, and they need to start coming to some of these meetings. And that's one thing I was, you know, offer, we can come to every commission meeting if you want, it could be me, or the, or the area supervisor, we can give you updates, or however, if you want us to come, once a year, twice a year, or every single meeting, I don't care, I don't know how often I'll need.
So, I was just gonna ask if, if Jess, because he's the one on the ground, he's the one that we depend on, to help the, the ag community in the county, do you have any concerns?
Well, uh, you know, like I brought up before, you know, I had several sources telling me that they were gonna hire two biologists, and, uh, it was coming, I think it was coming from, uh, the, uh, Mexican Wolf Recovery Team, that they were saying that only half of the depredations are, uh, uh, confirmed, actual confirmed, and the rest of them are just made up. Okay, so what they're saying is, is myself, and Steve, and some of the other people from Dimming, uh, Magdalena and so on that's come over, done these investigations, that we're not doing our job, which is, you know, uh, kind of upsetting, because we base everything on the best available evidence for each investigation. And, so, I was told that, and that's why I was, I sent that on to you, the commission. And, uh, so, uh, they kept saying, "Well, we've gotta reduce the, to protect, you know, basically to protect the wolf, they've gotta reduce the, uh, number of, of confirmations." And, and that all goes back to trying to protect their wolf. And, uh, and like I say, I've got that, I got that information from several sources. And, uh, and I think that, the only way that they can reduce the depredations, uh, confirmed depredations, is if they change the guidelines on confirmation, that's the only way they can do it, because all, every one of these investigations are based on the best available evidence that, that is documented, and that's it. You know, the, I mean, there's no, oh, just look at it and say, "Oh, it's this, or it's that", that, that don't happen. That hair's clipped, that animal's skin, and, and the evidence is documented by photograph, and so on. So, uh, what some of those people are saying over there, uh, you know, from the wolf people, you know, uh, I come to the conclusion, it's just, uh, some way to discredit not only the county, but Wild, uh, Wildlife Services, uh, to protect their wolves. And that's what it's all about. And so that's why I wrote, what I wrote to the commission, my concerns on what I was being told.
And I was telling Jess earlier in the back of the room, that, you know, they, every organization has their own agenda, so, you know, of course Fish and Wildlife is threatening dangerous species, thus bringing the wolf back, quote, ours is, ours is did wildlife damage management, and, and our interactions are not always rosy, you know, between us and other agencies, that's just the way it is, because our, our mandate is to protect the rancher and the agricultural people. So we work, we work for that, but, there's gonna be naysayers everywhere, that's always gonna happen, every, it don't ma-, I've been stationed in many places, and, and there's always some naysayer in there going, "No, this ain't right, that ain't right." But, but what we do is, we just, we stay the course, we stay strong, we keep working with the people, and, and, and we count on you from the legislative side to bring the information up that way. 'Cause I'm not allowed to solicit, I'm not allowed to, I'm not allowed to go, and I can only say certain things, being a federal employee, but you guys can put the pressure on your side, coming in, on the legislative side, things like that.
So what Jess was saying, can Fish and Wildlife dictate to you guys how, the guidelines for confirmation of kills, or?
No.
They, they use the best possible practices for investigating a crime, can, can they dictate to you how you do that, or?
They get, so, what, what happens is, when we go into negotiations for any of that kinda work, we hash all that out in the beginning, and we don't let it happen. And they, they realize, now, they do say, "We know you guys have the best sound science for damage management, you've been doing it hundreds of years, okay, then trust us", you know, "When we say something, trust us." Okay, so, so you have a bunch of kills, just, just hypothetically, you have a bunch of kills, and look, they get all these reports going, "Wolf kill, wolf kill, wolf kill", well, of course it's gonna pique their interest, you know, because, hey, that's affecting their population, plus it's like, huh, but those things happen, things come and go, and peaks and everything like that. So, we're telling them that if we go, if we go in on these investigations, and we have two entities doing the investigation, and they're in agreement with what happens, and that's what happened, you know, that's the way it is, you know, 'cause we're not, we're not saying, "Oh, I'm just gonna say it's a wolf kill", or "I'm just not gonna say it's a wolf kill", we look at it from all different angles. Just like Jess said, we look skin out, we look for bite marks, we look for bruising, we look for all kind of things, you know, they look around the areas and things, that's what we do, and that's what we're gonna continue to do, and if I have to fight that fight with them every day, I will, but I don't think I will. I think they understand, and we have MOUs with them too, international MOUs, that they, that we're the damage management people for them, so that's even above anybody's level in this state, you know, so those kinda things are there.
Mr. Gosnell, you're, you're the director in this state? And you say that you work with directors from Colorado, Texas, other states?
Mm-hmm, Arizona.
Mostly just in the, in the western United States?
In the western region. We do, we do talk to people in the east, and we have meetings with them and things too, national meetings and things, but this wolf thing concerns every state I mentioned. Even though it's not in Texas yet, it's gonna be in Texas sometime, he's worried.
We throw, and we send a staff floor, Commissioner Hannah, Commissioner Paxton from Sierra County, our county manager, and a gentleman that represents seventeen, uh, New Mexico, Arizona counties, to Washington DC. And you're, you're saying a lot of things that I like to hear, you know, I don't, I don't, do you, will you come out here on the ground and check on Stephen and, and communicate with Jess, and, and really get a feel for knowing some of the characteristics? with Jess and really get a feel for knowing some of the characteristics that go on, like for instance, Fish and Wildlife Services for a long time? Do they give you telemetry stuff now?
They, last I heard, Mr. Oakley said that they're gonna give me a receiver like the one that Steve uses, but it's on, he's got it on order.
But they come in.
But look how many months it's been.
At six o'clock, yeah, it's been a long time, sir. And at six o'clock, they turn them off and go home. And so, what I'm saying to you, what I'm asking you, you and these other directors of other states, do you tell people in Washington that?
We do.
Because these guys go there and they say, we got to this office and we went in this office and it was hard to get there, but when we sat with this guy and I should have let me either. But didn't have a clue about what the wolves did up here or what they're like for Tom Patterson or Corwin Holsey or Alan Patman or Anita and her family. How, how these people?
Yeah, let me back up a little bit on you there too. So, Wildlife Services is a very small program in AFIS USDA. So, a lot of people up in the capital don't really know about us. We have a deputy administrator that she is stationed in DC, Janet Butler's her name, and two associate deputy administrators there also that do different things. So, she's very aware of the wolf program. A while back, a bunch of the Stockings Association or somebody sent that letter to Secretary Perdue, you know, saying, hey, we need some help, this is a, this is a real deal out here, which was good, that's a great thing to do. What Secretary Perdue does is he gives it to, just to the administrator, Arbaca, who gives it to Janet and Janet turns around and gives it to the regional director in the western region, which is Jason up there in Colorado. And he turns around and gives it to me and says, they want this address, but they don't have no money to give you, so take it out of your program. So, we have to bounce that back around and figure out, okay, how are we gonna get money to do this and not hurt any other program? The good thing that you guys can do as associations, commissions and everything, is it's better to have a law in place that says so much money will be dedicated to Mexican gray wolf work, just like they do. So, I came from Guam, had a congressional act for the brown tree snake, where a certain amount of money was for the brown tree snake every single year to keep that snake from getting off that island. That's the kind of things that we're gonna lead to. And that takes, that does take time right there.
What you're doing is exactly what is the red flag with all of that. And I've been, I've had a lot of fun with the Bureau of Reclamation and I've had all like the standards of the US Fish and Wildlife Services. You know, they're unbelievable. So, my point is, and I appreciate you, I appreciate what you're saying. But do you think that anybody in Washington, my old granddaddy, he was a different character and the more I get in this new world with cell phones and computers and all of this stuff, now I went to Home Depot the other day, asked a kid, I said, I need to know about pipes.
They hit.
That's what he done. And he didn't answer any questions. That's where we're going. So, what I'm saying to you, Jess, do you think those people in Washington have any idea how volatile this thing is getting out here? Because, yes, this is, this is what I think. I think that these groups go to Washington and they say, please listen to us, please know how hard this is for our people. And at some point, pretty quick, at some point, all of this is gonna change. People are gonna finally say, no, I'm not, I'm not gonna play nice.
I totally, I totally understand that.
Three hundred thousand dollars for wolves. And, and you know, boys, don't ever think in your wildest imagination that some of these old boys out here can't get pretty creative.
Oh, no, I knew that.
And so, I don't want that to happen. But, you know, it's really hard to have a couple of senators like you, Dolan and Hyler, that won't even tell our county and listen to our people and talk to them.
And I agree with you on that. Let me just tell you this, you know, I've been known throughout the agency to be a guy that just pushes programs hard and build programs up. I've done it in several places. That was one of the reasons for coming here. When I was coming here, I met with the regional director and he said, your number one priority is a Mexican gray wolf. I said, okay. I said, I'll address it. I said, that would be, that's what I'll work on the most. We're still not gonna deny all the other programs that we have here because they're a good program. And it takes time. Give me a couple of years to get things rolling and just see and we can, and we'll come back and visit this discussion again and see. And every time, I'll come to your commission meetings and tell me, just say, hey, it doesn't look like anything's happening, so what can we do now? Because there's gonna be some failures along the way, that's gonna happen. That's just nature, the nature of the game. But that's not gonna stop me, I'm gonna keep going and keep going.
Take three or four hours, you get in a side by side car, go ride around with her.
One of my things I told.
Go over here to Luna and let these poor folks over in Luna, some of the folks down in my area.
I told Karen when I met with her, I said, look, I wanna meet with the ranchers. Can you get me appointments with the ranchers? And she said, I'll get you meetings with ranchers. So, that's in the plan. And I said, well, let's do it after the holidays, after everybody's settled down and stuff and then we'll, get me out there on the landscape, let me talk to them one on one and see what the, see their issues and it makes it easier for me to do my business, you know.
When the wolf is on the landscape, nothing slows down for the ranchers.
Oh, I know.
So, I, explain to me or expound on your directive to make the Mexican gray wolf your priority, to what context?
To address the issue.
To address the issue.
Which is, which is the ranchers losing all their cattle. Because we're mandated to protect the rancher.
So, your wildlife sort of specialist in the county traps. They trap predators, they help with investigations. Is the Fish and Wildlife Services asking wildlife services to track their wolves that are uncollared to collar them?
They are and they're starting to now because.
You need to put a stop to that before it gets out of control because he doesn't work for Fish and Wildlife Services, he works for Wildlife Services.
Right. Well, that's why, see, I got a meeting with their director next, next week on, next Tuesday or something, because I'm gonna go in and tell them, look dude, I need some money. You know, it used to give us, they started out giving us a hundred and forty thousand for two states. Then they cut it down and they didn't give nothing one year. Then the net last year, they only gave seventy thousand for two states and we had to give some of that money to Colorado. So, by the time you're done, you know, that, you know how much it costs, you know, salaries and benefits is the name of the game. So, and this year, they're saying, well, because of continuing resolution, I can't give you no money. I'm like, federal government's always in continuing resolution. I'm not buying that. So, I'm gonna go fight my call. But now I know, so this region for Fish and Wildlife is getting sucked into the Denver region and it's gonna be whatever that region is, I don't remember that number. And when it does, the issue that, their number one issue, there's grizzly bears in Montana and Wyoming. Grizzly bears ranking a little higher on the list right now than Mexican gray wolves. So, now I'm gonna have to fight against my other state directors for funds, which I'm gonna do and I'll do it. But it just, it's those kind of things that keep happening that hurt programs, you know. And they, I don't know why they keep doing that, they just need.
Don't worry about it, they're doing a big push to introduce grizzlies here. Mine gets her chance.
So, if Fish and Wildlife gives you more money, which I know you need the money to run your budget, I hope that they don't do that with the step by step process to pull you away from your mission statement as Wildlife Services to put you more in the realm of helping them on the ground and collaring those uncollared wolves.
No, because what we do is we do an interagency agreement whenever, so they say, we're gonna give you some money, we write up an agreement and come to terms. This is what we will do, this is what we want. So, I can easily just put that in there and say, no, whatever.
I would really appreciate that if you put that.
I can easily say that, that's what my constituents want, so why would I do that? I'm not gonna do it.
I would like.
I would use the money to hire another technician as well.
You need to.
Yeah, the, between the coyotes and wolves.
I was just gonna say that one thing that you don't wanna do is to do, you know, basically bind their hands from removals.
Yeah, not from removal.
You know, for, for, you know, too many depredations and they remove them, that's what Wildlife Services always done in the past. They're the ones that actually go out and do the, either lethal or trap them and take them out of, you know, so we don't wanna block that.
Now, that'll always contribute. One of the other things that, so, there's a lot of rules that Fish and Wildlife Service has that we don't, we're protected by the farm bill. So, any rancher that we run depredation stuff through me, through our office, Wildlife Services, when a FOIA is requested from the NGOs out there, they're trying to stop all the wolf trapping stuff, you know, I get to say, nope, they're protected under a farm bill, we don't have to give any information on that rancher or farmer, whoever it is. No locations, no names or anything like that. Fish and Wildlife's not protected by the farm bill. So, one of my, that's one of my leverages I use on them, I say, look, we should run everything through us because then everybody's protected. The people don't have to worry about that. Because everybody knows, you know, NGOs have their own agenda and they're getting bigger and bigger every time. Everybody's getting their retirement age and most of them are coming out of cities to the countries and that's something to look at hard. They're the ones that are trying to get rid of the lethal type when you have to do it, you know. That's where that problem comes in. I mean, they have their place, they have their place, but they're definitely trying to stop. And there's a bunch of FOIAs out there right now and a lot of them, although they don't mean a lot by some, one of the worship groups or something.
Did that answer your question, Jess, about the biologist?
Mr. Gus, do you have a business card?
Yep. And all my business cards, it's got the wrong, the sale number's correct, but the, they changed phone right when I got here, so that's wrong. I have to. Can Jess go ahead and if there's, for public knowledge, give the numbers?
I just wanted to go ahead and, and I have a few comments I wanted to make, to make and where we're at on the depredations for this year so far. In 2019, we received a hundred and forty-four complaints, dead livestock, injured livestock. Of the hundred and forty-four, a hundred and thirty-one were Mexican wolf related, a hundred and nineteen were confirmed wolf depredations, consisting of three bulls, fifty-nine cows, fifty-four calves, two horses, and one cow dog. Seven were probable wolf depredations, five cows and two calves. Four were confirmed injuries, one cow, two calves, and one horse. So, out of the hundred and forty-four, we had a hundred and thirty-one that were wolf related. Non-wolf related were two confirmed coyote depredations, two calves, three confirmed black bear depredations, three cows, and seven unknown causes of death. One thing I wanted to bring up also is some of these ranches are, it seems like every year we got five, six ranches that are major targets for depredations. Good example is Rainy Mesa. And we were up there, myself and Steve, and they'd gathered the cattle out of airplane ma, airplane pasture, Mesa pasture. And we were there on eleven-thirty and we were driving out and a wolf ran across the road in that pasture, went across the road in front of us. So, they gathered their cattle and put them in the pen and we came up there, we had, the informants had one dead calf and one injured cow. And when we got there, they were in the corral and we noticed one bull was limping real bad and then another cow was limping real bad. We found evidence of four cows that it, they're, these are all prick tested, two striped cows, second trimester. Four of those had evidence of aborting their calves. And there was one cow that had a big impact injury, a big cut across above the knee. We clipped it down, we couldn't find any bites on it, so it was unknown cause of the injury or cause of it. Another cow was bit back on the hip by the tail root, infected this big wolf bites. It was confirmed wolf attack. They're doctoring it, still alive. We did the calf, it was a confirmed Mexican wolf depredation. And the next day, I believe it was the next day, that the resource owner called me and said that, that she found another dead calf and a cow, another cow that aborted their calf. So, it's not mortality that's putting our family ranchers out of business. What's putting our family ranchers out of business, all the negative aspects of wolf caused chronic stress. Abort calves, they're running them at night, they're trying to take them down, they're stressing them out and they're boarding their calves. They're prematurely birthing their calves, they're too weak to get up, to even feed, so they, naturally, they're gonna die. All those negative aspects, you know, is a wide spectrum. And the ranchers don't get paid for that. The only thing they can try to do is just put a claim into Farm Service Agency. And what I was gonna recommend to the commission is the Wildlife Service, US Fish and Wildlife Service, I mean, US Fish and Wildlife Service, the Forest Service, and the commission, I would recommend have a meeting. They need to set up, because see, Forest Service is part of the signatories of this program. They need to stand up and be responsible for these areas like Rainy Mesa. After they did that, they pushed their cattle across the other side of the ranch, not far enough to get away from the resident wolves that are there. What I recommend is a, is a meeting, commissioners call for a meeting and address grass banks, other grazing areas that's not been utilized for years to where when you have a chronic killing area, that family rancher can move her cattle to other grazing areas away from the wolves, so they would even have a chance at a decent calf crop. A good example, this same ranch, three hundred production cows, two hundred and ninety prick tested, confirmed bred cows, hundred and thirty-one losses, missing, aborted, eaten up, and twenty-five confirmed improbable. And if the Forest Service can't do that to protect these, these family ranchers, then I recommend that the commission look at lethal removal and we take the responsibility to do that to protect our citizens.
So, I was at the Rainy Mesa Task Force meeting on Thursday and usually the agencies come in after, we meet in the morning and then in the afternoon, the agencies come in. Nobody from Fish and Wildlife or from Forest Service was there and I was gonna pose that question to them, is allowing some of these vacant allotments to be utilized when somebody's, has a severe impact because of the wolf.
Well, see, a good example is Rainy Mesa. What chance does that family have to succeed when they've lost a hundred and thirty-one calves out of two hundred and ninety production cows?
Can't survive.
I mean, if you tally up the dollar amount, that's devastating to anybody. So, any questions?
So, the hundred and forty-four number of depredation calls, that's all in Catherine County?
That's strictly Catherine County and that's, that's all the calls that were received on dead and injured animals.
And that, a hundred and nineteen of those were confirmed wolf kills.
Hundred and nineteen were confirmed. And seven were probable.
How does that compare to last year?
Last year, we had a hundred and fifteen complaints of dead animals for investigation that we conducted. And I can't remember, it was somewhere around eighty, somewhere around eighty wolf related. Also, Arizona. This year, their numbers have increased substantially too. And the more wolves that you have on the landscape, the more problems that you've got. Because these wolves are gonna eat regardless. And a lot of us figured out that it's easier to catch a calf or a cow than it is an elk. And so, you know, and I believe the game department's doing a study right now on what the wolves are doing to our elk population. What do we have in our county? Tax base. And for the, for economic, you know, in our, in our county would be grazing and hunting. That's the main source that we have in our county that we all depend on, even, even the tax base.
Have you had any interaction with some of the hunters hunting down here in the Gila to see what their harvest numbers might have been? Are they, are they getting elk? Are they coming up empty? I know up in, in our area. I know up in our area, they're bagging elk on first day.
Yeah.
And we had 80 behind the house the other day.
Yeah. In areas, you know, a good example is, I went to the end bar one time, Preston, and we went way in on a dead cow, and it was a confirmed wolf. And we drove way to the east there from the headquarters and made a big loop. And there wasn't hardly any elk sign. And usually, you see herds and herds out there in those rolling hills, out there to the east of Nigger, the end bar in here. And I says, I go, I haven't seen any elk, you know, what's happened to the elk here? He said, the wolves have pushed them out. They've been killing them, they killed them, and they finally left. They went to a different area. And so, that's a good example. You're going to have places in Catherine County that your hunting is still good, and you're going to have places where the wolves are a substantial number to where they're not. And I've investigated wolf-kill elk. Every time somebody calls me to check it, I check, I go out and investigate it, or I find them on my own. And one thing I've found is, they run those elk until they get tired, and they utilize the fence, the section fence, the barbed wire, and they'll finally, when that elk cannot jump over, continually jumping over that fence to get away from the wolves, it'll hit that fence and bounce back, and when they do, they got them. Three of them right there at the junction of 32 and the road going down to Torreyup Ranch. Right there along there, there was three elk caught in the fence and killed. Out by Aragon, on the inside of Aragon, one there. So, and up at the end bar also, ran into the fence. So, you see that, and, you know, so, I don't know how long it's going to be before the impact really shows, but I would say, by the time that they realize that our elk numbers are dropping down severely, it's going to be too late. They're not going to do anything to the wolf, I feel, but they'll cut down your hunter opportunity, and that has a direct effect on our economy in our county.
Do you think that the game department's going to keep you up to date with their research that they've been doing?
I, I kind of doubt it. I would say that it may be, it may take the commission to, you know, contact them and ask them to keep, you know, the commission informed on what's going on. I remember, you remember the other study that they had, right? And I complained about that, and I wrote letters, or, you know, sent emails out about it. And what they were doing, they were doing the elk study, and Liz Jazriak, US Fish and Wildlife Service, was feeding the wolves so they wouldn't kill the elk, apparently. And so, they had a flawed study. I mean, how can you have an honest study if they're feeding on the wolves? So, that, so they dumped that, they dumped that study, and because, and they're still, even right now, they're still going out and feeding. One of the calves that we did, 150 yards from a food catch, just over the private property fence, the wolf recovery team put a food catch there, and that calf was killed 150 yards from that draw station for drawed the wolves in.
We're up against?
So, anyway, so needless to say, the resource owner was really upset about that, because she stated, from the upper ranch headquarters to the lower cabin, her kids walked back and forth there.
Mr. Chairman, I've got an idea. Next week, I'll have a meeting with the Hila supervisor. And I think that we'll have an opportunity, I mean, during legislation, it may be rounded to regional courses, and since Mr. Godnell's here. And also, I think that Mike Sloan had a rough day up there the day we had our...
Oh, he had a rough day.
So, we'll try to get Mike Sloan, and try to facilitate a meeting with everybody to sit down and hear some of these things that you're saying. And I think that Adam and Duncan would probably be willing to at least come and sit down and hear what you're saying about, he got pretty mad at me over one of our ranchers here, and a wolf situation where they picked on him a little bit over a permit, you know? And he said, well, you reassured me it was the US Fish and Wildlife's responsibility as far as wolf kills. And I reminded him that they signed off on the program, and they endorsed the program. You're right, Jess, they need to have some funding.
And that doesn't mean that it has to be confined to Catherine County. The Forest Service is vast.
Well, I don't know if it'll happen, but we'll try to put that together, and we'll try to get folks to...
Another consideration, too, another consideration, too, is having some funds to help these people that have lost so much that they can't even afford to move those cattle. They need, they need to have some type of, either go to the wolf recovery people or somewhere to get some assistance in actually moving their cattle when they can't get a permit or change. Well, thank you.
Thanks, Jess.
Any other questions for Mr. Godnell?
Yeah. One of the things that I heard about the meeting Wednesday was that it appeared that the paperwork for filing a claim was a bit ponderous, laborious, complex. And I wonder if this new biologist that you just hired is willing to help people?
One of his missions is to get with Fish and Wildlife and figure that out, because that's Fish and Wildlife's paper, that's not ours, so. But our goal is to, our goal is to get these people paid as fast as we can, you know? It's not like they got money in the bank to sit on. They need their money, so. That's one of the things, because I keep asking when I go to meetings, what's holding us up, you know, what's the problem? But they haven't come back with any real answers yet, and they have to talk to their people and all that stuff. So, as time goes on, I'll find out more, but I'm going to ask them that same question every time I meet with them, over and over. And I'm meeting with their boss next week, so I'll probably get some more answers then.
But you do provide some help for people in filing?
Mm-hmm. Oh, yeah, yeah. If anybody needs any help, tell them to talk to us. They can talk to our field guy or your supervisor down here. Yes.
Question. Along those same lines, one of the things that came up at the meeting that Steve moved to was, why not just let the rancher self-report and then audit, rather than have, have to have the third-party verification? I mean, I understand that you've got to prove that it's a wolf kill, but as far as, once that's, once that part is proven, you know, let, just let the rancher self-report.
So, whenever Jess and Steve do an investigation together, that is the verification. So, he reports, he verifies, so it's done then. So, as far as that, the paperwork's done. Then it's in Fish and Wildlife's hands. That's the part you've got to figure out, is what, what in Fish and Wildlife, where's that hold up? And what's, I don't know.
Other counties with FSA have the problem because they don't have their own wolf investigator. That's, that's the difference.
Yeah, and that makes, that puts an additional step in there.
That's why other counties have a problem with their third-party verification, because they don't have their own wolf investigator. Would you like a copy of that IG complaint and the response?
Sure.
Oh, I don't know if it's a large file, I'm not sure if I can send it to you. If I can't, I'll just mail it.
Okay. That'll be fine, great. Anything like that will help, anything that I can read. And y'all might, you know, I know Cliff comes to the inner agency and then, would you come to the executive meeting? We have the executive meeting this last week? That might be a platform y'all might want to ask to come and speak your concerns at one of those. Just make the request, and he'd get you in there, and come say your piece to it. Because all the leaders are in there, and they're on the phone at that time. The executive meeting, not the inner agency meeting, the executive level meeting, to be heard. At least you get it out there, you know, to everybody at the same time. Well, thank you all for having me, and if y'all have any questions, call me anytime, day or night, my cell phone's on there, my work phone, and my email.
Thank you.
May I have a card, Miss Sloan?
Yes.
I can change my office number to which one I want to call you.
You can pick one point thing you want to discuss that, generators, I can, or...
They've been sitting there patiently. Yeah, and I'll come back and discuss it.
Amanda's yawning.
They've been sitting there all night.
Thank you very much. I'm Steve.
All right, we're going to move to an action item, memorandum of agreement between the county and the village, grading and making and repair of roads. Been on the agenda a few times. Adrian wrote this up for us.
Mr. Chairman, I've provided both Adrian's version and the, and the county's version. I said Adrian, and then Andre, excuse me. The village of Reserve and the Catherine County version, and they're a bit different. So, there you go.
Okay, so what's the county going to be out on board?
Mr. Chairman, I can explain the differences. Generally, it appears that the previous, the previous, or the previous agreement was entered into with the Village of Reserve, which was, you know, back not too long ago, in 2012, the time period, when, we all know the village was certainly, you know, in bad straits at that time. So, the county basically agreed to, you know, to really help out the Village of Reserve and, you know, do all of their roads for free, or a dollar, I guess, the same thing. I will say this, what's important to know is that the roads within the Village of Reserve are not, are not the county's responsibility. They are the legal responsibility of the Village of Reserve. There are, under the law, there are no county roads in, you know, in the village. We are always doing roads, you know, we are always helping out with roads. We help get funds to improve and to pave and maintain roads, but it's not, it's not our responsibility, and every time we take that on, then you're just adding additional liability to the county. The other thing, the previous MOU said, well, we're doing this in exchange for fire services, but these are two completely different things. You know, fire services are paid for by the state and volunteers. These come out of the county's road fund, which is a specified fund, and with the county employees. So, basically, what I've done, just at least for the consideration and discussion, is prepare to more generalize, or MOU that's generally what's done nowadays in various counties, with counties and municipalities, often have these kinds of arrangements. For instance, the Village of Magdalena has one with Socorro. Dozens of small municipalities may not have, you know, an adequate road department. So, basically, what it does, it allows for, for the, for the Village of Reserve to, the A will do all the road grading for the roads that need to be graded, they need to be identified, Mark wants to fill in the blank on number 2A. Basically, will charge a standard rate. I put what Socorro County generally charges, which is $225 per hour, which covers the liability, the maintenance, the fuel, the repair, the employees', the employees' wages. And so, twice a year with a call from the mayor or, you know, director, then, you know, Mark can do that, if it's necessary. If there's further, if there's further work that needs to be done, which often there is, then basically, what we would, the way this is at least drafted, would be that the, for road improvements, and that's section three, we would work out a task order between the village and the, and the county, again, if the county has the ability to do it. And upon, you know, the receipt of that task order, basically, we set out, we figure out how much it's going to cost. We're going to basically charge whatever it's going to cost the county to do, and the 10% administrative fee to cover, you know, to cover anything additional. All of this stuff is up for discussion, but that is the difference between the two. It also makes it legal, there were several provisions in the previous contract that just didn't comply with the state constitution, and this one has all the standard provisions that we need.
I do know, in talking with Andre, that snow removal is not in, is not, did you include snow removal in here?
No, but I certainly, I can just, I can put that in right away.
I think that was one of the concerns they had.
Certainly.
This is kind of open-ended, no specific dates on it?
I'm sorry?
This is open-ended, no specific date on it?
That's correct. This particular MOA, we left it where if you adopted it, and the village adopted it, it would just continue until you do a new one or get rid of it. And that way, you know, I always hate the old proposition where, you know, we have an agreement, and every two years, we have to come back if nothing's changed, and this prevents us from having to do that.
Well, you indicated you were going to try and get a grant of legislative money for your equipment, right?
As far as snow removal, if I may address the village's perspective on this. Yeah, snow removal and the safety of the community is our biggest concern with moving forward with this. Mostly, coming up and down the mesa is a big problem. I don't know how many people have to do that when the snow is pretty bad, but I've slipped and slided around down here a few times myself. So, that was really what was spurring, spurring this. As far as, like, this covers a lot of, the grading and road improvement. Grading, the areas that I can think of would be Blue Owl Lane and Plant Street are really the only unpaved roads that need attention. I mean, we got Foster, but that's a project that's in the works, that's going to be paved soon. The lane as well, but that's another one. We have a portion of Jimmy, which probably doesn't need a whole lot of work. Blue Owl Lane is the one that runs along, out to the irrigation, ditch association uses that road. I don't know if the county uses it for much. I know we use it to check on our wells for the, for the community, there are two wells that are located at the end of that. And so, the landowner, there's an old easement in place, and I've yet to find the genesis of that, of that easement, but my understanding is that the county is part of that easement. Anyways, Blue Owl Lane runs along Rogers Beach property towards our wells and the ditch association. Road improvement, we do a lot of that on our own or with projects. We probably won't need much assistance on that, although it is nice to know that we can, you know, turn to you for formal assistance. The $225, I mean, yeah, we didn't close the doors, but we're still pretty financially strapped at the village. You know, we run a very shoestring budget. And, let me see. Oh, well, our plan is, we'd like to get our own equipment for snow removal. We can't count on it, but we will look to legislative appropriation. We do have other needs as well, but that is something that we'll be looking towards. So, hopefully, we'll be able to take care of that on our own within the next couple of years. Grading, though, maybe we could get the equipment, but we don't have operators like that, you know, know how to use the equipment. We only have a staff of four for the whole village, full-time anyways. That's about it. If you guys have any questions...
So, basically, you're okay with the, with the contract or the MOU if, if something on snow removal is put in?
I can't speak for the council, because it hasn't gone before council yet.
Right. But maybe they're just perusing it, if they...
Yeah, I think so. I'm going to, I'm going to bring it to their attention at our meeting next Tuesday, and I'll get their, you know, I'll have their feedback then. But at this point, the one thing I noticed is the lack of snow removal, and that's, I know that's something that's important to the village.
So, is there a reason to pass that?
I mean, I guess I would suggest, my, my personal suggestion is, you know, the county is, you know, I mean, we love the village, but the county's the one doing the favor. I think the village needs to approve it first before you guys do. I mean, I don't want to, well, you know, you approve something, and then it comes back here, and they say, well, I don't like paragraph 6B, you know? That'd be my suggestion.
Let them prove it.
Let them prove it first. That'd be my suggestion.
If I'm hearing this right, most of your roads are paved in the village?
Yeah, very few. The only one I can think of is, Blue Owl Lane could use work, and Plant Street... The only one I can think of is, is, uh, Blue Owl Lane could use work and, uh, Plant Street on.
So, you're kinda telling us grading, that's great, but we're probably not gonna grade too much.
No.
So, what's the county doing now on these paved roads? Are we patching them or?
No, the county hasn't been doing anything.
Mark?
That was my question, the patching and that, are we responsible for that?
We're, we're not legally responsible for it. What this basically does is just set up a workable arrangement. This doesn't mean that, that anything has to be done under this MOU. This just means that if there's a time when the village needs, you know, needs help, there is a, there's a mechanism in place where the village can, can call and do it, and if, and if Mark determines that it's feasible, I mean, and that's the thing, if, if you have graders all over the place and can't do a thing, well, then, you know, there's nothing to do. But this is just a tool where the, the two entities can work together and share, and share resources, you know, pretty much at cost, so that no one's making a profit, you know, everyone's just, you know, everyone's just kind of sharing this. So, I can add snow removal and put it into the village, and they can village reconsider.
So, under this, if we were to go do some patching on their road, 225 an hour, that would cover that?
The $225 an hour is for the grading. If we needed to do patching, that would be under the section three, and then basically, Mark would say, you know, I think, this is how much it's gonna cost us to, to go and patch the road.
Right, so we've got it covered.
So, it's, it's covered, and I, and I would just add snow removal.
So, yeah, you can add snow removal, your suggestion makes sense. That would be, this, the county, this is the proposal the county is making, send it to the village, let them decide, and then come back to us?
Correct.
And I do have it on the agenda for our meeting Tuesday, so.
I've got one more question on this, uh, Blue Owl Lane you're talking about.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, I don't think, we've never bladed that road, so that would really have to, to add on.
That's one that, that needs.
And there is an easement in place for us to do that, is that correct?
Yes.
And you're requesting us to blade it maybe twice a year, once in the spring, once in the fall?
Maybe once would be plenty.
Okay.
Once would be plenty, I think.
So, we need a motion?
Just to table it? I would say table it until it's been approved by the.
So, I'll make a motion, Mr. Chairman, that's tabled, until Andre says he can't run it through the village?
Yeah, motion and a second. Set this aside until the village looks at this proposal and makes a decision. All in favor? Aye, aye, motion carries.
And if I could ask for an updated draft that includes the snow removal to present to them by Tuesday, if that would be possible?
I, I'll send it to Bill and he'll send it on you.
Thanks a lot.
You bet.
Thanks a lot, you guys.
Thank you.
It's the noise?
It's the noise. We have actually ordered two, uh, two new heaters.
Right.
I have them, they just need to be installed.
We have to get them, they won't be as loud as that thing.
Don't worry, you're not fooling around, you know?
He's, he's down at the sheriff's office putting in.
I know you guys over there in Luna live in the Arctic Circle. Did I have, you should let your wife book my house in, you know? I mean, snow removal over there.
Okay, we'll go back to a discussion item. This is one I wanted to put on here, retiree healthcare.
Uh, Mr., Mr. Chairman, um, I've provided the additional research stuff you requested. Additional than that.
So, a long time ago, the county could have entered into this program and chose not to. So, here's just a breakdown of what could cost the county if we chose to get involved now. So, what happens with retirees in Captain County now is they retire, and they have to go on whatever they can find. I, I had a retiree call me and wanna know why the county wasn't in this program. He said, if the, if the county was in this program, it'd cost me 400 a month now for retirement. As it is, it's gonna cost me 800 to 1,000. So, and I was like, well, I didn't know there was a program, so I went and looked into it. And before everybody says we can't afford it, I think, I think we need to figure out how we could. I would, my proposal would be, 'cause the county right now is paying 90% of the cost of healthcare. The employee pays 10%, and the county pays 90%. I would propose, we figure out, 'cause it would cost us about, we could take, it's like a loan and take 15 years to pay what we have to pay in backstop. I would propose that we, this is just a suggestion, I'm not wanting to vote, this is a discussion item. We figure out what we would need, if it was 35,000 a year we'd have to pay, plus the percentage higher in rates, come up with a figure, and see if the employees are willing to pay 80. It might, it might be 10% of, of, with the.
Pay 20% instead of 10%?
Yeah. Would the, would the, would the employees be willing to pay 20% of their health insurance instead of 10, make up this difference? Whatever the number is, it might, maybe they'd have to pay 30%. I don't, that would be a way to cover this, so we could get involved in this. And I, I think, I think it's something the, the employees here, worked their entire career. I mean, you know, I mean, there's other ways we could go about it, but that would be the way I would suggest and try to.
Um, if you'd like us to look into it further and stuff, we, we definitely can. The possibility of getting a loan, uh, to cover the buy-in is, is definitely there. Um, we would just have to dedicate funds yearly for the next 15 years, saying we're gonna dedicate, it would probably be closer to 40 grand a year, um, to, to pay it off in 15 years.
So, Mr., Mr. Chairman, I'm sorry, Commissioner.
Go ahead.
Um, a couple things. So, Sierra County recently did this, they did this two years ago, um, and it's probably one of the best decisions they ever made, was to provide for the healthcare for their retirees.
Best decision they ever.
It was one of the, one of the best decisions they ever made, is to provide the healthcare for the retirees. It's one of the most valuable contributions you can make to your, to your staff and to your employees. Um, and I believe that we also did, there did it with a loan from MFA. I believe we pledged our, um, county correctional grocery receipt, not our county correctional, our, um, our county harmless grocery receipts tax they adopted, um, for a payment of that, if I'm not mistaken.
You ha- you have to use a grocery receipts tax as collateral?
Not necessarily. I, well, normally, you have to, you have to identify.
It doesn't mean you have to pay for it.
You have to identify a special revenue stream within MFA to, um, and, and what I was just thinking was, because we now have a commitment from, once, once we adopt that IRV, and I hate to spend the money before it's, it's materialized, um, but they anticipate the first payments of that becoming in 2021, December 2021, we will receive our first payment, that we might be able to pledge the revenue that we're always receiving for that 30-year period under that pilot payment for the payment of this.
Okay, now, we'll have to look into that further, but, because when I asked them, they said, I don't know if you, they said, um, they would much rather look at a grocery receipts.
Absolutely, no, they would, they would. I, I mean, that's, that's, that's the common way they do it, is they identify a special revenue stream, and it's normally a GRT. I think the pilot is, is probably less comfortable for them, that, that doesn't mean it's not feasible to.
But it's, but it's still, to me, and, and what I told them, it's guaranteed funding.
It's guaranteed payment, that's right.
It's guaranteed funding, and if the life of the loan is 20, is 20 years, and the life of the payment is 20 years, that's guaranteed.
That's right.
So, I, I would think that it should.
And, and we certainly have certain advocates on, on that board as well. Um, I, I believe Steve Colton sits on that NMFA board, if I'm not mistaken, and, um, we certainly can make a pitch to that NMFA board for why this is, why this is appropriate and why it's warranted.
So, I guess, you know, just, I think this is something the county needs to seriously look at, if they can't afford it. But I think we need to try to come up with how we could afford it. That was my suggestion. So, I would like to, you know, come up with some numbers, put it on the agenda at some point, and take a vote on it. But I, I just, I think it's something that the county, I know it's something the county, my Aunt Peggy was village councilman and the mayor, and, it was, I was sheriff when she came and said, the village got on the retiree healthcare thing, why didn't the county do it? And I wasn't in this position then, I didn't think anything about it, but that was a long time ago. So, the county missed an opportunity. So, I think forward-thinking is something we need to do. And I just, our employees aren't getting rich working with it. And I just think it's something we should try to help them with, so, so that's my spiel, but all I have to say about it.
So, Cliff, or Bill, or, or Dave, a timeframe of how we investigate this and find out, can we afford it, what, where do we get the loan to buy in this program? Do, do you think that, uh, that's something that, that Bruce Winkle in Sierra County could provide, and you guys could provide? We oughta be able to get answers for Chairman here before too long.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner, all right, absolutely. So, Bill's already done the preliminary work, someone's already done the preliminary work here in terms of, um, getting the buy-in amount. I think the next step is to figure out financing component of it, and whether or not NMFA will accept our.
Well, I mean, we, we need to verify, we need to verify everything, but, yeah.
So, the, the next step would be determine whether or not NMFA, the Mexico Finance Authority, would, would accept the pledge of our, um, payment lieu tax payments from Borderlands, um, to pledge our repayment of that note. Um, and, and, and that's something just to discuss with NMFA. So, I think that's the next discussion that needs to be had with NMFA, and I'd be happy to, to help build through that process.
Absolutely.
So, you, you have to have collateral to get.
You have to have a revenue stream. So, I mean, normally, what you do is pledge a, a grocery receipts tax. So, I mean, if you have, uh, an increment that we haven't pledged for the repayment of some other note, we would pledge that, but I'm not sure that we do, I mean, you guys don't have very many increments.
No, we have two.
Yeah.
And one of them is already pledged, but one of them is not.
So, I mean, that, that might be an opportunity there, and so, we could, you know, rock here to pay Paul, you know, so use that, and then wherever we're previously using that for, use the pilot payment to, to pay for, are you following me? So, it's just kinda.
Well, I, I think we're gonna need to do some discussion with Bill, because, because we're also looking at the lot purchases as well.
So, that wouldn't stop us still from, okay, the, the employees will pay a little more for their healthcare to make up the difference, 'cause we gotta pledge something.
You're not gonna be able to pledge that difference.
Yeah, no, but, but we could still do that.
You, you could do that separate, that'd be a separate option, to determine, to take away certain benefits that you already provide your employees, you know, to take away that 10%.
Well, that would take away some of the costs to the county.
That's right.
Is what it would do.
Yeah, that's what it would be.
But it might, it might not be necessary, because there, but at, at any, we'll, we'll give you options.
All right, any other discussion? Okay, census preparation?
Um, we're, they've, uh, they've, they've put in a new individual for the south part of the state, and so, I did not have my meeting, um, at the end of the, at the end of November, and still waiting with those, with those guys. But, um, Andre left, and he's the other co-chair for the census committee, and, uh, we have to get together, but we're running into a time where we really need to start acting and putting together and, and helping them get people involved. So, just wanted you to know, we're running a little behind time, but partially it's because all of a sudden, we have a new person that's in charge down there.
Okay, generator purchases?
Um, wanted to look into, but would need your support. Wanted to look into the possibility, we have $40,000 for each senior citizen site. Look at the possibility of, of using part of that money for generator purchase for each senior citizen site. Then also, we need a, it would be nice to have a generator at the fairgrounds for the building there, which is a designated safety, um, zup.
Where you need to, uh, emergency operations and everything.
Yeah, it's a, and, and, and we, we need, we need a, a generator there. And the other thing that we found out, um, the other day was, we, the county could have some problems in an extended time, because our fuel pumps are not gravitational anymore, and we need electricity. So, uh, looking at a generator for the reserve site, so that we can pump full fuel, is, is a, is a, a possible need. So, it's all into how big of a generator we want, how much to, to run. Um, they could be fairly significant purchases, but if we could pool all five of those locations together, we might could get a, a fairly good, um, price on that. The money would be coming from different areas. The county, the, the county would be purchasing the generator for the, uh, fairgrounds and for the, uh, for, and, and for the road department. The, uh, hopefully, we could use those legislated funds for the other areas. But having those areas, um, with the possibility, um, as, as locations where people could come and you've still got power, you've still got the ability to run kitchens in those areas, I, I think that could, is something to look, that we need to look forward to and plan ahead for.
I think we weren't very prepared for that extended outage, um, that happened here.
I was worried. I got a high school's interact generator.
I'm thinking, I'm trying to get creative here to figure out how my house could be a emergency meeting place for me and the world.
Well, you know, the big, the big thing is, they didn't have, the people coming through and getting gas, Black Gold was prepared, and they had, they had, they, they could pump gas. Most of the people coming to get gas were getting gas for their generators. People had generators, but that's, the big lines, people were getting five gallons at a time, they weren't gassing up their vehicles for the most part.
The first thing we need to do is decide what size generator you need.
Right.
Side. There's no reason to have a 20 KW generator when all you need is an 11. 'Cause the difference in cost is quite a bit.
I told me one time, go through every building and tow up the amp pole.
Yeah.
You can actually, there's a meter they make that you can actually, whenever things running on one of those buildings, you can hook it up and it'll give you an amp reading, and add one amp, you got her now.
So, with.
Do you just need it up to run certain things?
Yeah, yeah.
So, with the, with the outage, and looking at the fair building for the evacuation center, some other problems came up, as far as like the septic system?
Well, one of the problems, we figured it, for an extended time at the fair building, the septic system probably doesn't have a, uh, a long, a, a long enough, um, area with infiltrators, and the, that, that septic system could get backed up. It's not part of the city system.
So, we can't use that for an evacuation? That's why we're moving to the senior centers until that can get fixed?
Well, one thing about the senior centers, in each, uh, in Camato, Reserve, and Glenwood, you at least have an area, you would have one center there that has a, that has restrooms, has restrooms, but has, uh, kitchen facilities. So, that's, that's something, if you designated those, and we worked with PMS on that, uh, it would be a designated area that everybody would know they could come to.
Well, and this capital outlay money that you have, is it designated already for a certain thing?
It's designated for improvements at the center, and it's fairly generic, but we wouldn't have to change the ICP, the ICIP plan, and I could get, I could get with facility.
We could find out we could use some of that money for that.
I think it's generic enough we can, because for building improvements and that.
Definitely being the improvement.
So, it's, it's, there were some lessons learned with that outage, um, and, and I think there's always lessons whenever something like that happens, is you're never fully prepared.
My lesson learned was, if you don't own your kids, your gas, when it, don't break them back. Be lucky you don't have no kids to borrow in your life. Trust me, I know.
Yeah, the cost of that propane, I was about to give lamp sales, my wife wouldn't use up all that propane. Yeah, that was a two-day view, yeah.
Well, um, I, I will look into the pricing on that, and I will. Well, I will look into the pricing on that. I will look, I will look into, I'll check with Priscilla on the use of that money and I'll come back to you with an action item probably genuinely.
Has the fair building, we have to have a generator there. It's designated the emergency.
I agree.
We definitely need to fix it to make sure that we can use it for an emergency center with that septic system, because that's what the money was allocated, that's how we got the money, was it can be used in evacuation.
Well, if we can use it, that's just, that's just us surmising. I don't know. I mean, it probably lasts, you know, several, probably even several weeks. But eventually that could back up because it is a septic system.
How did that, will they be okay with the septic system?
Because they couldn't go attach to the village because of the ditch. The river.
Well, we can just run the pipe into the river and we're fine.
We can designate that Wild and Scenic.
Keith, that was a joke.
So how do we go about figuring out how, what size generators we need?
Can Jerry figure that out?
Jerry, I'll figure that out for him. Then we'll have a good idea.
Okay.
If everyone's agreeable.
I'm agreeable.
Okay, the SWACA meetings and concerns?
Two real quick things. One is we have a forest plan meeting without him next week. I guess we were supposed to be able to make comments in October and they extended it to 1st of December. Now it's after the 1st of the year. And so we have a meeting next week with him. He's asked for it. And the other thing is, is that on Wild and Scenic rivers, we're probably gonna have to have each county that the SWACA member pass a resolution opposing it, those that will, because Grand County accepted to endorse the Wild and Scenic. And Billy Billings, who belongs to the SWACA, I think Billy's probably opposed to it, but he's in a, he's in a tight spot. And we don't want to lose him as members, you know. So that's all I got on SWACA.
We're also gonna have to take over operations for SWACA.
Advertising.
So we'll have to do the advertising, the meeting notes and stuff like that. And that will be up to either Linda or NI.
And I think the way that'll work in the future, you guys, is whoever's the chair from whatever county, they'll provide the person.
Did you ever hear from Steve Hottenbaugh with the Regional Foresters for the SEEPAL4 about our, with removal of the SEEPAL relief? Remember, we discussed that with the Forest Service in DC? And they said they would, they would contact Steve Hottenbaugh to get back in touch with the Cameron?
I did get a letter. And I'll forward, I'll forward that to all three of you. But I think it wasn't from him. But I did get a letter from the sir. But I think it was actually, I got it before, right before, I mean, before I went there.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
Flood plane ordinance, we've got that on agenda, so.
We do.
We'll discuss that when we get there. We're down to action items. Anybody can break before we go into the?
Please.
Just turn on the heater.
Okay. All right, action items. We did the first one.
Just a short time. Just a short time.
All clarified, just publish the matter of the lodger tax. Don't even do that. We already.
No, we're not.
We voted on that last time.
We published that, we're just dead.
We're going to publish it and move on, considering, we don't need to do that when we'll go down the deep. Consideration of Resolution 0272020 Hazard Mitigation Plan.
The only thing I ask you to do is change 022, 036 is the proper number. But everything stays the same.
I think for the sake of FEMA, to get our monies, we need to approve it and move forward. But this mitigation plan needs to be readdressed because there's a lot of hazard identifications in the plan, but there's not much mitigation on the plan.
Well, and there's, there's stuff on there that doesn't really fit our county.
It's designed mostly for urban areas. Remember, this was written by somebody that the county contracted with to get a grant that was received. And they identified some, but not all. So it's not county, it's not Katrin County specific. So for the sake of getting FEMA money for disasters and whatnot, I think it needs to be approved, although I don't agree with it. It does need some work on it.
It can be modified.
It needs to be modified pretty heavily.
It's gotta be redone every five years.
Supposed to. But this doesn't even identify any mitigation. There was absolutely nothing in there for power outages. Because after the power outage, I was looking through it, there's nothing on the power outages, which is hazardous mitigation plans can be as huge as you want them to be or as small as you want. This one is very basic and it's designed mostly for urban. So I can move to approve it with the intent.
I'll second that.
So the proper number, 034?
036.
036. All right, I got a motion. And a second to approve Resolution 0362020, approval of the Catherine County Hazard Mitigation Plan. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Did you skip one accident over there?
We're talking a little bit less.
C, we're gonna do, because it's included in H?
C was a, was a, it was something the DOT sent me to be approved. And it turned out they sent it, it was for another county. So I, that's, that's not there.
We're gonna drop. Go to E. Consider approval of budget resolution.
Okay.
031?
034.
I'm gonna try not to be too long-winded on this. Let me start by saying too, also, what I'm about to explain to you, I take full responsibility for what happened. The, while Joyce and I were crossing our Ts and dotting our Is a couple of days ago with the budget and stuff, just revisiting and everything, I realized that none of the road department budget got uploaded into DFA site. So what's happened is that it doesn't change, it doesn't change our budget. The budget that was approved by all of you is still the same budget. The only thing that got uploaded into DFA as far as the roads was the salaries. So on this little piece of paper right here that I gave you, the red, you'll see 498,000 got uploaded. The total should have been 1,800 and odd, some odd, that got uploaded. I contacted DFA, they're aware of what's happened. We realized it was a glitch in the numbering. So if you don't, if you, if your crosswalk number is not correct, it will not upload into the DFA site correctly. It just ignores it. That's what happened here. It ignored it. So DFA is aware of it. They, they're aware that I'm just going to get it approved again so I can move forward and get it up into the site. Like I said, it's not going to change our budget, our total budget amount, because that's still gonna stay the same no matter what. It's just not the same at DFA, but it will be our... What's that basis?
So we have to do a budget resolution because they don't have it.
Right. And so that's what brings it to this, this is, this basically, this one right here basically shows everything that it's going to capture. There's only one item on there that is, is a new request for a budget increase that is not covered, that was not covered previously. And that is from the Bureau of Elections. That's a $10,072.65 budget increase that Bureau of Elections is asking to be increased. They, they had a deposit of that money made in their account, an additional deposit. So they're asking for the budget to be increased by that amount. I'm not quite sure how DFA works on that, so I don't know if that amount that just got deposited like last week is going to show up in the DFA or if we just have to run with what we have this year. They'll let me know. They will let me know. The other one with just the three little things on it, that is the Sheriff's Department. There's basically no increases there. They're taking, they're decreasing their budget on the 401 and moving some of it into their 603 to cover corrections. So basically, other than the $10,000, the amounts will not, the amount won't change. It's just getting it uploaded into DFA to be, and like I said, they, they are aware of it. As soon as, as soon as I figured it out, got on the phone with them. And as I said, I take full responsibility because I did not catch it.
But on Becky's behalf too, DFA didn't catch it.
Yeah, well, DFA normally will send out a thing saying, "Hey, you've got this, but you didn't do this. Are you sure?" And we didn't get any, but neither here nor there. My responsibility, so.
So you just didn't punch the right numbers in or software?
It was when we, they, there's a template that DFA sends us with crosswalk numbers on it. And we don't use all the crosswalk numbers, so we have to go through one by one and, and add in what we don't have. So when I went in to add for the road department, I did the old Excel thing, like grab it and carry it down, which did like 001, 002, 003. And it should have been 001 all the way down. So it does not capture it in DFA because that, that number doesn't truly exist. So that's what happened. It's corrected now and waiting to be uploaded into DFA.
DFA. Do what you gotta do.
Yeah. Yeah. But I just, I just have to have the resolutions because.
Come down and hit you in the head.
Well, they might. I don't know. If they do, that's okay too. I probably need it.
They won't drive that far.
They won't drive that far yet.
Well, I hope to approve the budget adjustments and money transfers based on Becky's overview.
I'll second that. Mr. Chairman?
Thank you, and I apologize.
Okay, we've got a motion and a second to approve Resolution 0242020, budgetary increases, corrections. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carried. Okay, this is the consideration of approval of Resolution 0222020, correction? Got my correction to handle.
Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, I would respectfully ask that we deal with the GRT move in January so that all interested parties can have time to come here and, and discuss that part of the fund. And as far as the ambulance purchase, you did approve that in September, so that doesn't need to be done. So I would just ask that this item be tabled, tabled until January. And we'll deal with the grocery receipts tax transfer, which you, in July said we were going to do, but we tabled that because it could not go into effect until January. And so we were gonna do that later in the year. And I'm just asking you to move that to the January meeting so that interested parties, if they wish, can come and bring that up again.
Did Becky have some concerns with the, with the ambulance? I couldn't understand her comment.
No, that's, that, well, that's not a commission thing. But when they sent out the bids, our office modified that some. They didn't like that. So we took off those modifications and put the bid out.
Were the modifications that significant?
Not that significant. I think it made it more readable. But if that's the way they want to put out, that's not a big deal.
Certainly was harder to read.
Thank you, Kathy.
I think, I think it would have been better, but if that's the way they want it, that's.
Maybe people in the industry can read it.
Yeah, it's not, it's not worth the time.
That's what she said, that they don't, because I told her, I said, "If legal agrees with it, then I'll go through with it." But that's.
I didn't have any idea what that said.
Yeah, yeah, I knew it.
So, so I would just ask you to table this until January.
So this is moving the ambulance fund money to corrections.
That's what we're gonna do.
Because we already.
We already did that.
I'm starting to get a little bit confused.
It was tabled.
What, what was tabled?
We tabled that, but we already voted. There's an eighth percent. Attorneys can correct me by law. But we had a public meeting. And we voted to take that money that was dedicated to the ambulance fund as the state is allowing us to do this, and we moved it to the general fund, right?
I think that's right.
I think that's right.
I didn't take the minutes, but.
I have to take the minutes, right? I think that's right.
And we voted to do that. So what Becky's saying is we tabled that, but we didn't.
I don't think we did.
Because we've already moved it to the general fund. Now we're just gonna dedicate it to.
Basically, Dave, this was based upon, this could not be moved, this would not be enacted until January. And we had to have another action before then because it was gonna be until, until then. Now, are my notes wrong?
I thought it was important.
It was important to change it. He'd be hopeful if we would give him the next. Yeah, I think that would be helpful. I mean, I don't want to misrepresent.
I can't remember what month it was, but I know we voted on it.
That was July.
Right, we started today.
July, we did something.
In July, they came to the meeting and they, Sharon Baker was here and she said, "Don't move it." We did it another time. We brought it up another time. And it was on the agenda and none of them showed up and we voted on it and moved the change in. In October. Shannon, Shannon Donnelly from Pyattown sends us all the letter where she said, you know, "It's up to us to make that decision, but can you readdress it if it needs to be readdressed again?" And we passed it. That's what I thought.
If it's my understanding that the postpone till December was to just agree to put it into effect in January because it didn't affect, it didn't become effective till January?
That's what it was.
So it was, we asked.
So it didn't need to be voted on?
It didn't need to be voted on.
Okay, I'm sorry. Well, I'm sorry. And this could be a disconnect with, with me and Linda because, because she's gone. There's a note on the board for it. I thought, I thought it had to be acted on.
We voted to put that money into the general fund. If we're gonna put it into corrections, we have to vote on it. We'd be, wouldn't we?
We need to vote on it.
Yeah, we need to vote on it. But we've got people thinking we haven't moved that money. We already have, but.
It's in the, it's in the general. You know, what we had discussed was using that money for, for corrections. We had, we had discussed that, but it had not been acted on.
To corrections, but we put it into the general fund.
It's in the general fund.
Yeah, so if we need to move it to corrections, then.
I know that's what we did.
And, and the argument that I've had with the EMS directors is you guys, and I know it's lower now because you took out $200,000 for the ambulance, correct?
It's 100.
Well, there's 213,000 taken out of the ambulance fund, according to the recap from.
Well, 100 for each one over two years.
Well, there's, there's, there's one ambulance, well, that was a grant. The other one was a grant. The money coming out for reserve is the legislative.
Which is, but it's 100,000.
It's just 100,000 that's out of the, out of the.
So was that grant money put in the ambulance fund or is it put in capital outlay?
It's, we haven't, we haven't received it yet. We won't get it. The ambulance fund won't get it until the ambulance is here and we have an invoice to pay.
Okay, I guess I'll, I'll check with you for the state of time. Why, maybe this is the total amount that's been taken out of the ambulance fund, 213,000 dollars?
Possibly. Is that just, is that the total expenditures?
That is the yearly cash disbursement.
That's, that's everything. That's everything.
But the argument that I have with, with EMS directors is you guys start spending your money, but they are spending their money finally because they were sitting on over a quarter million dollars and then telling us, "Don't take our grocery receipts tax. Don't take that percentage we give us." Well, spend the money that you have. Don't squirrel it away. You're sitting, I can't, I can't tell Gail and Gabe that we need more money for the ambulance when they're sitting on a quarter of a million dollars.
Yeah, well, that 213,000 that is out in expenditures right now? Yeah, well, that 213,000 that is out in expenditures right now, 100,000 will be redeposited when we get the grant money.
Yes. So they'll be back up to over a quarter of a million dollars in their ambulance fund? So the argument that they have, in my opinion, is moved when it comes to not moving that money from GRT and leaving it in the ambulance fund. They don't need it in there.
So, so the only thing...
It's already been moved anyway, so.
The only thing would be is if one of them requests it to be on that, as a discussion, I'll ask you guys, and if you want that, we'll be there.
Thanks.
So we have a motion to, justice aside until January.
Well, actually, just to...
No, it's, you don't know action. It's a done deal. It's been moved.
Yeah, but we've gotta, if we're gonna put it in corrections, we have to vote.
If we're gonna put it in corrections, it'll have to be enacted. I'll make a motion that we table it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. That was set aside until January. Okay, this is consideration of approval of Resolution 0035-2020, this purchase lot reserved.
Well, you voted to, you voted to purchase the lot? We need to vote on, we, we need to vote it as an official resolution.
Chairman, Commissioners, a lot of this is to delegate to the county manager the authority to, to do all of the grunt work in the, in the purchase. To, the price is pretty set and as it's, you know, the ability, the ability and willingness to pay the, the costs. But there's a lot of things that he has to go through within MFA and so forth, and agreements that have to be drawn up.
Mr. Chairman, let's turn to page one of two. Is there a second page to this?
Um, I don't think so, maybe...
Page, page two, uh, turned out blank.
I, I didn't pick that.
They just printed that way.
Sorry.
Thank you.
Yes, this is pretty much... This is Resolution 0035-2020.
Need to approve the resolution?
No, second, second.
Motion in the second, approving Resolution 0035-2020, authorizing the acquisition of the lot opposite the courthouse. And, sir, delegating authority to the county manager for the actual purchase. Motion in the second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Okay, this is consideration of approval of Resolution 0033-2020, NMDOT request for time extension, cap six.
This is just, uh, just, uh, our last, this is our last request with the DOT to extend it, um, funds. It's like the five we passed last night.
And there's no problem with this just an extension, right?
No, no, this is just, uh, taking care of the paperwork and the forms, working with Bill Santi ago on that.
Move to approve Resolution 0033-2020.
No, I'll second. Motion in the second, approve Resolution 0033-2020, time extension, all in favor?
Aye.
And, uh, Mr. Ruhl, just for your, um, information, there won't be a letter attached to that because they said the one that we did last month would do fine for that.
Is your consideration of approval to sell the Quonset hut at County Fairgrounds? Like closed bid or removed building?
Uh, just like to ask your permission, in order to, uh, what the Fairgrounds Committee has, uh, has, has decided is they like to build on to that, to the west end of the, of the, the main structure and put, and so that would move, that would take the, the, the old Quonset out of the way. And we either have to build a new foundation, uh, to try to move the building as a whole, you know, or, or try to get somebody to buy it and tear it down, or, or we tear it down and move it. I just need your approval to do one of the, uh... And I don't know if somebody would want that old thing or not. I, I don't know how hard it would be to move, but, uh, we, we need to move it so they can get on with their, with their, with their building.
I move to give the county manager the authority and direction to either sell or remove the building, the Quonset hut at County Fairgrounds. Would I ask you that, Mike?
No, I'll second.
Motion in the second. I have one question, though. What's the plan of closed bid?
Well, I, I would just, I would advertise it and they would, they would sit, they would all give me sealed, sealed bids by, you know, two weeks from today, and the lowest bid could have it. I mean, the highest bid, I didn't even say the lowest bid. And in fact, I'll probably give it to the lowest bid because we probably won't get a bid.
Motion in the second. Have the county manager, without the bid, sell the Quonset hut or just remove it if we don't, anybody buy it? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Okay, direction to staff to publish title and general subject matter of County County Flood Plane Ordinance.
I will respectfully turn that over to Mr. Hance.
Mr. Chairman, members of board, we've discussed this on several occasions, especially in relation to the process now where Construction Industries Division is requesting a, you know, is requesting the county sign off on, on quite a few of, well, on, on all the new building out.
Any, any new one comes through, I have to do that.
That's right. The reason for that, after, you know, quite a bit of, you know, research and looking into it, um, the county does have a flood, currently have a flood plane ordinance. And the problem with the current flood plane ordinance is, is probably about the, you know, one of the more onerous ordinances that, you know, that there are. You know, it requires that counties basically have a staff person, almost a professional engineer to, you know, to evaluate flood plane levels and to make a determination of whether or not they're in the flood plane ordinance and to require anybody who's basically doing anything to come to the county and obtain a permit. And we know, just as the chairman talked about, you know, as far as ordinances that aren't being enforced, well, this is, this is one of those. Um, the, the problem that we have in this county is that we are in the same boat as 10 other counties currently in New Mexico. We do not have federal emergency management flood plane maps. And what happens is FEMA's supposed to go in and make a map for every single county which shows you're in a flood plain or not. That makes it really easy. You know, you, you show where your house is or wherever you're gonna build and it's either in a flood plain or it's not. Socorro County just recently, in the last two years, got their maps done. You know, they've been waiting on them for about 25 years. Um, which then Socorro County adopted a flood plane management ordinance and now has a flood plane manager. Flood plane manager does have to be certified, who's ever doing it, even Bill, would have to go to school to, to get it done.
It's a, like, a week.
It's a week's worth. Yeah, I mean, it's a fair amount of knowledge. It's a good thing to have. The issue that we have is when there are no flood maps, FEMA, you know, you know, the port, the purpose of it is to obtain insurance. That's why you have flood plane, you know, flood plane management and, and... But if you do not have flood maps for your county, you cannot obtain but the most limited amount of insurance possible under FEMA, which is basically $35,000 a year, which does not cover very much if you're, you know, if your house is wiped away. And that's the, that's the bare bones minimum insurance. You pay a fair amount, you know, a high amount for a premium, um, and then you get that much coverage. So I just wanted to go through with you really quick. Um, you're not required, you are not required to have a flood plane ordinance or to do any of this stuff. So out of those 10 counties where they don't have maps, half of them just, we are not participating in this whatsoever, um, which is, which is an option that the county has. Currently, I, I, I talked to the Department of Homeland Security and pulled the statistics. So basically, currently in this county, because of this, um, currently in this, let me just pull it, hold on one second. Currently in this county, there are 11 people with insurance. And, and...
With flood insurance.
With flood insurance, with flood insurance under FEMA. There are 11 people with this $35,000 maximum payout.
Well, they're probably all in Glenwood.
And they're probably all, yeah, that's probably right. So the, the, so basically the value of the insurance is, yeah, well, 11 times $35,000 and, you know, they've had, they've had payouts over the last few years of 108, 168,000 since 2012. That's how much has been paid out. Those, there's only 11 people with this insurance, probably because no one else can afford it for $35,000. There's very few people. Um, so basically what we have, you, you, I really, you really have a, some choices to make here. And really the two options are, well, three options. One, continue as we are doing, which is fine, but we are really going to need to put a lot more resources into, you know, we're going to have to very much start enforcing this ordinance. And our ordinance as is is probably one of the more burdensome ones. I mean, you want to put a pipeline in for your cows who better come to the county and get a permit. That's pretty, you know, pretty extreme currently the way it's written. The second option, now by the way, all ordinances have to be approved by, by FEMA if you do want. So our ordinance has been approved. They're like, yeah, if you want to go that far in, go for it. The second option would be to, to actually, you know, to, to get, do the bare bones minimum ordinance, which I, you know, I have a copy of and, you know, we're ready to publish that. This is the bare bones minimum that they will approve. Um, I will tell you, I don't know that, you know, going through it, FEMA has told me they're, it's bare bones, but it, it really doesn't seem that less onerous than what we're doing. Third option, which actually, uh, you know, this is something that you need to discuss with your constituents and have the opportunity to do, but my, my personal thought on it is that it might be the best option to repeal the ordinance completely. I mean, if there's only 11 people participating, it costs, you know, it's very onerous on the county. And everyone who ever does anything in this county is going to have to come to Bill for a permit. And I don't know that that's a place that we want to be. So those are really the three options. And what the action today would be to either, to direct publication, either to, you know, have a less onerous, less onerous ordinance or to repeal the ordinance. And we can, we can direct both and then have a public hearing on it the next...
But if we repeal the ordinance, they're still gonna have to come to me.
They're not, because once they repeal the ordinance, we, you know, we tell Construction Industry, the reason Construction Industries, this is what FEMA, you know, FEMA and Homeland Security said, the reason Construction Industries Division is coming to you is because... You have it, is because we have an ordinance. That's why. I mean, and that's why actually when we were putting this all together a few months ago, I couldn't figure out, why in the world are they coming to you? Well, that's why, because we are on the list of having an ordinance and we have the responsibility to go through and determine whether you're in a flood plain and how much mitigation you need to do and what kind of building you need to do to fix your flood plain.
So we're also gonna have to readdress the hazardous mitigation plan because my triber very plainly put in there, we have a flood, flood planes manager and we have an ordinance, but he didn't identify who the manager is, which I assumed the whole time was emergency management because that's what emergency management does. So we're gonna have to take that out of that hazardous mitigation plan because if we turn that into FEMA and repeal this ordinance, we're gonna have conflicting documents with FEMA.
We would, and if it's something you want to do to repeal it, I mean, you may have 11, you may have 11 angry people here saying, we want our insurance, but, but basically you have the tax, you know, 3,200 other taxpayers paying to these 11 people who have insurance.
They won't be able to have insurance.
Not through FEMA, they will not. You will not be able to obtain, I mean, that doesn't mean you can't have your regular homeowner's insurance, but you cannot obtain it through FEMA if, if, if there's no ordinance, that, that's correct.
And that's all that you did.
Let's, let's table this.
People are still jaded.
One year from January. One, one, one year from this month and I'll just run off to Mexico.
So, so my triber as emergency manager is not willing to go to the flood planes training. Is, is that why you're taking on that responsibility?
Um, I'm taking on that responsibility right now. I, and, and one of us is gonna have to go to the flood planes training. If we, but I, unless we repeal this.
I mean, certainly another option, you could get with a, you know, get with another county grant through Socorro.
Could you write up more bare bones?
I, I cannot write more, I mean, the only thing is I, I, I would, I would commit, I could make it way more bare bones, but, but FEMA will not approve an ordinance that is any more bare bones than what they've provided to us. And I truly don't see how that's very much more bare bones than we have.
Right. So if, if we repeal this, we probably need to contact the 11 people and let them know what's...
Can they be identified through FEMA?
I'm sure they can, but they're not gonna give me that information. You know, we probably need to do some, some advertising or...
Wow, what a mess that was.
Is repealing an ordinance the same process as approving an ordinance?
Correct. So whether you approve it, whether, whether we repeal it or whether you just make it more bare bones, um, you do need to direct the publication. And I, I would suggest you direct the publication of a revision or repeal of this ordinance. And then we'll put that together and we can consider it, if that's where, if that's where you want to go. If you want to give it more time and, you know, try and contact these 11 people or see, you know, I mean, Bucky probably can, you know, probably has a better idea of who they are than anybody.
I really don't. I suspect, there's one, one individual that I probably could go to and ask and he would tell me, I'm really close friends with it, and start there if you want me to do that.
However you all would like to do it. Not only, you'd have a month to do that if you want to hold off, you know, if you want to do publication if it's certain January.
We're paying an emergency manager, why can't we direct him to find this information out for us? Because that's part of the emergency management.
That's certainly up to the court, certainly you do that.
Well, I need, the way I think here is, is now that I'm thinking, I think of three individuals and it would be real time-saving if I just approached all three of them real quick and said, if you're a FEMA insurance owner, there's gonna be some changes that might cost you that insurance. And then they might want to say, well, I just re-upped it, you know, and, and I think that will cause everything to shake out pretty quick. But I do agree with what you're saying there, you know, but I'm willing to do that.
We get ourselves into, just like Buck said, we get ourselves into messes because we, we make these decisions and then there's, whether it's employee not following through with what they're supposed to be doing or, or we pass an ordinance that keeps us in the tail later. And, and if we have to get permits for every time somebody puts in a pipeline, then...
Or sneezes.
Or sneezes.
Well, I mean, I, I would much, I'm telling you, I would much, I would much rather, um, uh, inspect a building site or, you know, at least look at, I look at it on the map, I talk to the guy and I get a letter from him saying it's not on the, you know, to, to make sure the county's okay. And so I, I can do that. It's not like we build, like new houses are getting built every day. But the fact is, I'm still out of compliance because we have this ordinance.
Still out of compliance, I mean, and this includes bringing in a manufactured home, bringing in a trailer house, I mean...
I was gonna say, there's a manufactured home right outside town, sitting right in the flood plain.
Right, and, yeah.
And whether he has insurance, I don't know.
So...
Probably not.
So how do, without flood plain maps?
So if we...
I mean, it's common sense and all, there's a flood, but I can't figure it out. Without flood plain maps?
So without flood...
We make a decision based off common sense?
Yeah, let, let me say this.
Then what happens if it's not in the flood plain when we finally get the map?
Well, what happens, well, I mean, my, my bigger concern is, yeah, if it is in a flood plain and someone gets washed away, then certainly the county's going to get sued. Well, you gave me a permit to, you know, to put my house in that arroyo. But, so, I mean, right now, what it works, and, and so if we don't have flood, flood plain maps, really what needs to happen, for instance, if anyone comes in and wants to do anything, since we don't have an engineer, you need to say, basically, you need to put the onus on the, the person who's the permittee, the person who's getting the permit, to say, all right, well, come to me with engineering plans certified by an engineer that says, you know, I certify this is in a flood plain. Because basically the only thing Bill can do is there, there, there's maps that are published, you know, on, online databases and stuff. You can go look at those maps and make a general guess if it's in a flood plain, but, but truly, uh, you know, unless you're an engineer with a transit and a tripod and all the ways to figure this out, yes, we are guessing and if we get it wrong, it is going to cost the county a lot more than the $35,000 in insurance.
There's a house at Homestead, you know which one I'm talking about, that if the Forest Service doesn't fix it upstream or up Arroyo, that house is gonna flood. that if the Forest Service doesn't fix it upstream or up arroyo, that house is gonna flood, because it's right in the flood zone. It's right in the flood zone.
So.
So by having this ordinance.
We're covered.
You're saying.
Really?
No, I'm saying we are in, I'm saying the opposite, we are.
So if we don't have the, if we don't have the ordinance at all.
We have zero liability.
Then we don't have liability directly.
We have total liability because we have this.
Because we.
That's we have the ordinance.
But we have individuals that have been impacted in Glenwood because of the wall of fire, potential flooding of their homes, that cannot get the FEMA insurance if we don't have the ordinance, correct?
Correct.
Who did this ordinance?
The ordinance was done.
Twenty-twelve. I think it was right when all that flooding happened. Somebody was probably telling them they needed it.
They had a guy from Hillland Security just sort of directing everything. And the big, the big concern was, you know, they really didn't know how bad the damage was. It was obvious we had a, a lot of, a lot of financial, and, and what was really, we knew then that the county, a lot of, was gonna fall on the county to put roads back in and, and fix Mineral Creek and Silver Creek and, and Whitewater Creek. So, I think this guy was trying to write things to hurry up the speed of the solicitation, solicitation of FEMA money.
And we still haven't gotten it.
And we still.
So, you have, now, I remember, Bucky, a couple of years ago, my triber was talking about the perfect storm that hasn't happened yet in, up around, down in your area. Are we past that threat now? It's still potential.
We, we probably, in the next twenty to twenty-five years, we'll not be past that. Because, uh, it's improved some, you know, but, uh, well, what I've noticed is from, is, is that in all the rain that we've had, we still haven't had just enough CFS flow through that catwalk, you know, to cause the moving, or from the whole beginning to end of Whitewater, to cause the movement of that rail line or bay line, whatever comes down through there. So, uh, i- i- in talking with the different people that were involved in that, we still don't have the vegetation growth on the hillside. And Garnell and I noticed, oh, every six months each year with the storms, what they call the reels, that's those eroding canyons down. And we noticed, we, we, we paid attention to about six or seven of them on the mountain, and they're getting bigger all the time, so that means that, that, so I think we're still, if, if, say, for instance, now the snow that we have on the mountain, if tomorrow we have a, a warm rain that would bring two, two and a half inches, kind of lots of trouble. If it was over the, all the elevation, that snow would really come down.
Dang, this is a tough decision to make. Do we, do we take away the insurance for those that could be impacted because of, because of the mismanaged forest and have no liability, or we go forward with having a floodplain ordinance and a manager and?
Do all this for eleven people?
Yeah, do all this for eleven people, I mean, it's, it's a, it's a, that's a tough decision, and I don't want to make it today.
I think the thing to do is, regardless.
All we be doing today, excuse me.
We're publishing.
All we be doing today is directing staff to publish something.
So then, so then hopefully, if, and, and we set up a meeting where we can get the word out, where people who are impacted can come in. I mean, ultimately, I'm gonna tell you what needs to happen, and, but this is, none of us may see it in our lifetimes, I mean, what, what needs to happen is that FEMA needs to do its job.
Yes.
And pro, and do its floodplain maps, and that way, that would make anyone, that would make the county's job easy, you can rely on floodplain maps, and then you can insure your house for everything, and it's all even, not just thirty-five thousand.
So our.
FEMA tells us it's not floodplain, and we let them bill their, FEMA said it's not floodplain, so that would take some liability on.
That would take, that, that alleviates a lot of liability, right now, the liability is squarely on Bill's shoulders.
So, can, is there any way that either my triber's emergency manager can put pressure on FEMA, or that Bill is the, I guess you're now the new floodplain manager as well, can you put pressure on him?
To get the maps?
To get the maps.
You can, but I will tell you.
We put in another request.
We are, we are, I mean, of the places that are gonna get maps first, I mean, we are not them, I mean.
Who's the higher up?
What about if the eleven people called FEMA, because they're the ones that are gonna use out, and they've paid the money.
I think, I think that we direct Mike to do this in the meantime.
I can get you a couple of phone numbers.
Let's table this till January.
And we get those eleven people.
I'd like to read our flood, get a copy of our flood, flood plan.
I'll email it to you right now.
Email it.
So I can read it and see how orange.
I'll email you the, I'll email you the proposed, the draft, as well as, and all the information.
So I make a motion, we table, you know, next month, got a motion in a second, table this floodplain, they'll do it next month, all in favor.
Hi.
Alright, alright, all right.
So we're not even gonna publish it?
We'll wait till.
We'll wait.
Okay, good.
Alright.
I'm bringing, I'm bringing a trailer house in.
I want to bring one of my second one, I want to do it.
That pontoon.
Although I'm on the mountains, I'm okay.
You know, I, but, you know, we do have some people, I mean, Keith pointed out one, I drive by that, coming, coming to work from Komodo, and it's like, why'd you build that up, why'd you put that out there? And there's another one in Aragon, same one, and, and, uh, it's just like, whoa, dude, I found him, my basement was already dug out. It just, just had bill walls on each side of it.
Okay, let's go to consideration of approval to change courthouse hours back to eight-hour days. I always wanted to talk about this, so let us have them put it on there like that. The issue we've had, and I attorney's convinced us, a legal day is eight hours. So is that a federal thing?
Mr. Chairman, a, a legal day, under New Mexico, under the New Mexico Constitution, a legal day is eight hours. Now, to be clear, that doesn't mean you have to work eight-hour days, that just means that is, you know, that's considered a day for calculation purposes. You can still have a, your road department can still work tens, you know, you can still change that around, but that is how everything is calculated out.
So, could we change our policy to where we would pay, if it's a holiday, and we're gonna pay them holiday pay, we pay them ten hours, we pay the courthouse nine hours, we, is that, we can't do that because a legal day is eight hours.
If you're going to pay someone a day of holiday pay, that is eight hours.
It's gotta be eight hours.
That would be eight hours.
So the issue we have is these, these people, like your road crews working ten-hour days, so if that falls on a Friday, they're not working, so, so it doesn't matter, they'll get paid.
They get paid for eight hours on that, they, they, no, if there's a holiday on a Friday, no, they get paid for eight hours, because that's all, everyone.
Over their home on.
Doesn't matter.
They're not working.
It's a holiday, it's a holiday, because remember, a holiday is getting paid for not having to work. So, just because your, your vacation time is on a, or your, everybody gets, everyone in the courthouse, except for elected officials, everybody gets eight hours of holiday pay if there's a holiday period.
But they don't, but that goes adjusted, so let's use.
We never did it to share something.
Well, you got the short end of the stick, that's how, that's how it should be, though, that's how it has been, at least, at least since, since Kathleen's been here.
So, so like, let's use the road department for an example, it's four ten-hours for them, and then there's a holiday on Friday, you take that eight hours for holiday pay, but you reduce eight, so they're getting forty-eight hours that week.
Well, no, they're getting, they work, they earned forty hours of pay, period, you earn that money, you cannot take that away, right? You don't reduce it, they worked forty hours, then they get paid, a holiday is getting paid for doing nothing.
So they get an extra eight hours.
Correct, so they get forty hours plus eight hours, that's right.
So they.
And it's not overtime.
It's not, it's just, it's just a gift, all that is, is a gift that the commission gave.
And, and, and so you don't, so you don't have to say, you don't have to say, well, I have to take an eight-hour day, eight, they can only come in two hours on Thursday because they're getting eight-hour pay on Friday, you don't do that.
No, you do not.
You don't have to.
Anybody know how many times this happened last year?
Last year wasn't an issue because we weren't really along this, um, their schedule. I think one of the, I think one of the things where it gets confusing for people too, is like, so Fridays are a half-day, so your holiday falls on Friday, so people are looking like, well, wait a minute, we only work a half a day on Friday, so we're, we're losing four hours or what, you know what I'm saying, you know what I'm trying to say? So they're like switching it to like, okay, take off a half a day on Thursday, so you get paid the full day on Friday.
Yeah, see, that, and then, then you don't have to. Those are, those are mountains and waters, you know, you get, if you.
But that's, that's gonna be the problem.
That's it.
Yeah, well, because you've got, but that's, that brought up something I hadn't even thought about. You got people, it's falling on a Monday, so they're working nine hours on a Monday, they're only getting paid for eight.
No, if they're working nine hours on a Monday, right, if they work nine hours on the Monday, you get paid for working nine hours.
Not if you get a day off.
Not if it's a holiday.
No, if you, if you work, no, if you work, if you work, you get paid for the hours you work, and then you get eight hours of holiday pay, because a holiday is something for nothing.
He, he's talking about if you're actually physically working that day.
If you don't work, you, you still get eight hours.
Yeah, so that's the point, we, money is a, is a nine-hour day, but if it's a holiday, why are we gonna get eight hours of holiday?
Correct.
So they've gotta make up that hour.
So you make up that hour.
If they need that, if they need that hour, yes, that's right, they need to make it up or put in vacation time, or, or take it for no pay, that's right.
But who's working on a holiday anyway?
Nobody does.
Sure.
Nothing except for.
Well, yeah.
Sheriff's office.
Sheriff's office, yeah.
It's like we have, like, we have, so like, next week, we have one coming up, like a good example, we have one coming up, so, but we have like three days running in a row, so it's only gonna, we're only getting paid eight hours for those days. So, like, me, I, I, you know, like, I'll be using two hours of vacation each one of those days to bring me to my, my time. That's the, that's how it was, we even worked at the mine, I mean, regardless of what it was, you only got paid for eight hours, so if, if I wanted my forty hours instead of thirty-eight hours, I had to use two hours of vacation time.
That's right.
Personally, I'd just still go back to the eight hours myself. My staff might not agree with me, but that's just my own personal idea.
Personally, I don't care.
Yeah, this seems like we'd complicate everything. I worked in the sheriff's department for a lot of years, if my day off fell on a Monday, and it was a holiday, they didn't pay me eight hours.
Although they were wrong.
Yeah.
I mean, I, I, and they have been, I mean, certainly.
Didn't like his payroll that time.
Yeah, they, 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 that's how it should be done now, I know it was, you know, yeah, I know it has been, so that's how it works.
Because when you're trying to award a few shots through, you can hire and go back and get your money.
I didn't keep good enough records. He'd have to be a real shot.
He's got these paralegals, one of them is named Vito, and the other one is named.
The easy way to think about that, though, is, for your scenario, right, if, if everyone else gets to hang out with their kids under the Christmas tree and gets paid eight hours, and you are out, you know, getting shot at for eight hours, you know, you serve the same benefit they get, which is eight hours of doing nothing, and then your normal time, which is eight hours, so then you get paid.
So you get double.
Well, it's not really double time, because one is actual time work and one is holiday pay.
So we have holiday pay where they get work?
Yes, we do.
We have a holiday pay.
You're working that.
You're working, right?
So if you want to look at it like that, which I never liked this calculation, but let's say you're a police officer, and you work eight hours on a holiday, you get, you get a premium, which is basically another half, and then you get eight hours of holiday pay and eight hours of what you earn, so you basically get double time and a half for the eight hours. Now, it's not truly double time and a half, because, you know, one, they're, they're different calculations, but yeah, that's what you get.
The only time that it wouldn't take it, the only time it's like, so we, so like, we'll take like a President's Day and, and work President's Day and observe President's Day at another time, so if you're actually, if we've taken that and moved it to observe it on another day, if you work that President's Day, you, you're gonna get your nine hours if you work the nine, I mean, you're gonna.
You're just gonna.
It's a regular day.
Yeah, it's not considered, it's not considered a holiday, because you're actually observing it, even though it's a holiday and we're working it, you're observing it somewhere down the road.
It's only a holiday if the commission says it is. Whatever's on the federal calendar doesn't matter, it's only when these board says it's a holiday. And if this hall, if this board wants to say tomorrow's a holiday, it can't. It's not, it's not, it's not confined to federal or state holidays.
Yeah, we typically make one of those day after Thanksgiving.
That's right.
So have we been having problems with the calculation with payroll?
No, I think the problem is we need to make sure everybody understands, if we're gonna stick with what we have, the polit, the policy doesn't really cover it. So you've got people, they didn't work on that Monday, but they've got to put in nine hours, so what's the county policy on that? And can you put it in policy, you know, you either take vacation or you make up the hour, if you're worried.
Or you do it that, that's.
That's already covered in our, yeah, that's already covered in our policy, we're good to go with that.
If I may, I think, I think the confusion, from what I've seen, I, the confusion is lying in the fact that, it's like Adrian said, you can, if you're scheduled to work, you, because, like, if I'm off on Friday and I get paid eight hours for Friday, the way it's being put to us is that we have to incorporate that eight into our forty, which we don't. I can technically work my hours Monday through Thursday, and then get that extra eight-hour holiday pay. I don't have to rework my days to make all the other ones. In other words, that eight doesn't become part of my forty.
But, but so.
I work my forty and then I pay that eight on top of it.
So one of the things that was discussed.
No, it's not overtime, it's just holiday pay.
One of the things that was discussed for the calendar, which you guys will have to approve next month, was, was, is already something that we can't do from understanding this, is that you can't say, well, so, because Friday's a, a half-day, you could take that half-day and add it to that half-day, and presto, equal a four-day somewhere, you can't do that. It's wherever it lands, it lands, okay.
If, if, in a way, Adrian's explaining this, if, like, if we take President's Day and make it the Friday after Thanksgiving.
Right.
Even though it's only a four-day, uh, four-hour day most, most of the time, we're still supposed to get eight hours.
Eight hours paid.
Even if we've worked four-hour days before that.
Right.
You're not a builder.
If you.
No, I, I, I know, I, I don't.
That's exactly right.
I'm speaking.
No, but yeah, but that's, but that's true.
Yeah, and I did not know that.
No, no, exactly.
And that's where the confusion lies, right now, everyone is under the impression that you have to take that eight hours of holiday and incorporate that in your forty.
Right.
And so that's where the confusion is.
That's.
The county is saying, this is a holiday, we're gonna pay you.
Right.
You get paid for doing nothing, right, and, and if you work forty hours, you get forty hours plus eight.
Right.
If you work no hours, you get eight.
So actually, yeah, that's sort of.
Yeah, and I think, I think once that, if that gets put out to everybody and they understand it, I think that's gonna clear up the whole issue, because.
Because I don't have a problem with, with, I have a problem with the confusion that I hear about it, and I just want to clarify what's at the end here.
You don't feel bad, this issue confuses everybody all the time, I mean, it's, it seems, for some reason, it's just confusing.
Because I think the road crew likes it. So I don't want to mess them up and say we're not gonna do that, because we're gonna have to pay you.
Lily came and told me, she's had, uh, her, that her, she, yesterday, she came and told me, her and her crew are both staunchly behind, are all staunchly behind what we're currently doing.
I don't care.
And I really don't either.
I, I understand this, at least that way my staff can either make up that hour or take a night vacation, we have eight-hour holiday.
Right.
I don't know why it has to be complicated so much.
I guess unless you just don't have any vacations, then.
Yeah.
And if you don't have any vacation, then you just don't get, you don't just don't get paid, or you go work two hours.
And there's actually not that.
I, I don't, I don't see any department that wouldn't allow them to work the extra hours if they need to, the extra two hours. I don't, I don't think it's possible.
You could do an extra half an hour a day, and it's no big deal, just to make it up. Um, but I think this year, we happen to have, what, what's confusing is this year, we happen to have quite a few holidays that fall on Friday, and that's where the confusion lies, and it's like with the road department, you know, they're being told that, uh, because they're off on Friday, so they're being told, well, you, you work Monday through Thursday, but you already got your four hours, so, so you have to incorporate that eight, so take off here. No, you don't, you work your forty hours and you still get paid for that.
So, so that, and that's something that has been happening, and apparently it was, been happening with the sheriff's department for the last thirty years, so we need to straighten that out.
Yeah.
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 So who's been telling them they have to just the eight hours?
If my, if my, if my day off fell on Monday and that was a holiday, I just didn't get paid.
No, I just.
I didn't, I was like.
Yeah, no.
But if I was working, I got.
I just think it's a misunderstanding, we need to be clear that.
All the way around.
All the way around, yeah.
So we need to clarify.
And neutral needs to be clarified.
I would get that, I would get that letter.
Attorney's.
Or maybe you should get that letter. Oh, no, I'll sit, I'll, I'm, I'm.
No, I'll sit, I'll, I'm, I'm...
Who need all, everybody, there's, there's not that many people that are not affected by it. You've got so many people that are elected or appointed, that could be an issue too. But we just need to get it clarified, so everybody understands, because I'm not sure anybody worried about what day we work. I think there's confusion over this holiday pay and what it means.
GTS, Google that stuff and find out the employment and the holiday hours in New Mexico, and you can have your answer on the computer.
Certainly, yeah, but, but who does that?
But you, but instead, we complicate it, instead of bringing it to the attention, I'm glad somebody brought it to your attention. Instead, it's just this little nitpicking and nitpicking and nitpicking, and then everybody decides that everybody's wrong and we're gonna screw it all up for everybody.
Yep, you're right.
Yeah, because I think our last holiday, I, I think our last holiday, I did that, I, I mean, I worked myself around to where that eight was part of my forty, and I didn't have to do that.
I, I think that's always been definitely.
Yeah, and that's, and that's just wrong.
That will affect our budgets.
We can get that clarified.
Well, that's... Make it clear.
This is by no means scientific, but from just an anecdotal perspective of the public, you know, talking to people on the street, um, people like having the courthouse open on Friday afternoon, and so that's just a complaint that I've heard.
You know, I, I, and I've heard that from other people. I've had one person come to the office and tell me that. Only one person.
Only likely to break on the street than to walk all the way upstairs.
If they're not gonna break, they're gonna walk there.
If it was that serious, I mean, wouldn't they, wouldn't they call me? And I just, I, I just don't understand.
I don't care personally, I don't care, I'm just telling you what I heard.
What do you want them to call you?
Last Friday afternoon, Sherry was leaving the office, which, as she left about ten after twelve, because somebody else had come in right at twelve to pay their taxes. As she was leaving, three more people were walking in with their tax bill in their hands. She didn't even, she smiled and said hi and kept going, you know, because she wanted to go back and take their payments, because she already closed everything down. But the reality was, they were coming in, but she said they were awfully low, so she didn't worry about it, they're making on Monday. And they did. But, you know, but that, there's certainly people that don't get it.
Well, I, I, I just thought if it was a really big deal, I mean, I, we would have been inundated. We haven't had a person stand up in a meeting since then to complain about that. And as you saw from today, we have people that know how to complain in this county.
I've had one person complain about the hours, and it was, the stance was, the work hour is forty hours a week, eight hours a day, that's what the county should have. And that's the only complaint that I've heard, was by one person. And I asked him, could you please come to the commission meeting and reiterate your concerns? And you don't want to. And my perspective is, if you can't come to the commission meeting and publicly state your complaint, I can't sit here and say, well, this one person complained, when it could be viewed as hearsay. But I haven't had very many complaints, and some of them that have had some concerns, you just learn to adjust. Oh, I can't go Friday afternoon, so I'll just either wait to... I mean, it's the same thing with the trash schedule, we changed it in Davil to Thursday instead of Friday. I had to adjust my schedule and remind myself, don't take trash on Friday, because it's not open. But it, it's just something you learn to adjust.
So, does anyone wanna make a motion on this? Or you just take no action?
No action.
Buck?
No action.
Alright, take no action on that. Consideration, but I do wanna get it, get it...
A memo.
Something out to people so they understand. I think that would clear up the courthouse problem.
Put a star by it.
Alright.
Alright, I'll, I'll send you a memo.
Consideration of approval of purchase of trailer, post-pounder, and air compressor for signs.
Um, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, this, this is that money that we were losing at the end of the year. And, uh, one of the DOT funds. And when we, we put out bids three different times, and we get these exorbitant bids for companies to come and put in, or put up, or, put up our signs. We've got eighty grand, and they're, they're putting out bids from anywhere, from three, wasn't three hundred the lowest one we got?
Yeah, three hundred and seventy thousand.
And it just, it's ludicrous. So, um, but Bill says, hey, find a way to, to, to spend this money. He says, we keep sending, if we send money back, we're just not, we're not gonna get you more in the future. So he's allowed us to purchase the, uh, what we're doing is purchasing the equipment and, 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 and we're, we're purchasing the, and the purchase needs to put rent, we need to change that to rent. For the equipment, we have to rent the equipment, and we're purchasing the material. So if I could ask you to, and, and this is, this is free money, we, we have to pay a twenty-five percent of this, but this is free money to put in something that was started a long time ago, and we'll get these signs put up this next year. And they're gonna let us, they're gonna let us put it, put them up over the year. So if I could ask that, if, if you're going to approve it, if you don't approve it, the money just goes back to DOT. But if you're gonna approve it, it's for rental of equi, it's for rental of equipment and purchase of material.
Because I want these road signs up as an EMT, it's hard to find places...
Under, understood, but we need to, what we wanna do is, we wanna rent a post-pounder, we want with, and when I said, if you could change that to equipment instead of that, because we actually want to rent a, a bobcat, you know, to pound them in.
I was just saying that because I'm an EMT and it's hard to find places, I moved with signage, that we can't have Foster Lane, Foster Road, Foster Avenue, I'm just using that, because that's the person that came to mind. Are we gonna have to rename a lot of these roads? Because I know a lot of the different places have the same name, but it's either lane or avenue or road.
If it's got any designation that's different in there, lane, avenue, or road, they can be, they can have the same certain, you know, name on it.
Check that ordinance, because I think that our road or, roadside ordinance says we can't do that.
Can't do that? That's right, if it's, you can't have, can't have Bill Lane and Bill Road, it's too confusing.
That's what, that was my understanding, but we've got a number of roads there.
Yeah, and the, well, and the thing is, it, this is a, this is a, it's always a continual process, I mean...
So we'll, we'll, we'll have, we'll have to come back to you with a list of the names and, and possible changes.
And there are people in, lying to the county that have changed the roads themselves and put up big road signs without counties.
That doesn't make it legal.
I know, I've told them that, but they said that's the only way UPS can find them. Whatever.
That might be true. Just saying. They can't even find you on the second mix-up.
Okay, we have a motion to rent equipment and purchase...
I've already made the motion.
I'm second.
Okay, we got a motion in the second to approve the rent of equipment and purchase material. What up road signs?
Yeah, we're gonna do it ourselves rather than going out, because we can't afford that, apparently.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Pro, aye. That moves us to executive session. Need a motion and roll call vote to go into executive session. In pursuant to New Mexico State Statute, Section ten fifteen one, only the following matters will be discussed in closed session. Instead of reading all those, all those that are listed on this agenda. All in favor? Or do I have a motion?
I'm second.
Got a motion in the second, go into executive session, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.